Welcome to the ninth meeting of fiscal year 2021 for the Milton Planning Board. My name is April Anderson. I'm Chair of the Board, and we'll have the Board introduce themselves now. Kathleen?
Kathleen O'Donnell, member.
Rich?
Rich Beeler, member.
Denny?
Denny Swenson, member and secretary.
And then our staff, Allison?
Allison Quinn, Assistant Town Planner.
And Julia?
Julia Getman, clerk.
And our Town Planning Director is following along tonight, however, not participating. He is indisposed, so we'll move forward now by calling this meeting to order. In accordance with the Governor's Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, this meeting of the Milton Planning Board is to be held remotely utilizing Zoom virtual meeting software. The login and call-in information is included on the agenda on the town website. So with that, we have a couple of administrative items to tackle. The next meeting of the Board will be at 7:00 PM on January 14th, 2021. We have some minutes approved. Denny, have you had a chance to review?
Yes, and I just want to get the date right. Julia, do you have that handy? Because I think it was November, oh, 24th, November 24th. I would like to move to approve as amended, November 24th, meeting minutes.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not that we can do a roll call vote. Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Denny Swenson?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. We have another member, Cheryl Taguyas, who will be joining us later this evening. She had a professional commitment tonight, so for anybody who's wondering where she is, she will be here. Now it's time for the staff update. Allison?
Sure, so I just wanted to touch base and let you know that the 40B applications, the four that we have already reviewed, have been scheduled for hearings before the Zoning Board of Appeals. Judy Barrett has been contracted to work with the ZBA through the hearing process. So I think that that's pretty good news. You know, we gave some great feedback. The Planning Board, you guys worked hard to make good recommendations and insights into the site plans, so they are now scheduled for hearings. Additionally, I'm working with one of the members of the Select Board Housing Committee on a webinar that will introduce the Housing Production Plan. Our hope is to provide some quality, public-facing information that's related to the affordable housing and the strategies that were put forward in the Housing Production Plan. We hope to roll that out in the very near future. We've got a pretty good, solid final draft out there, just waiting for some editing, some context, and then to hand it off to someone who's a little bit more tech savvy to make the slides look a little bit more presentable. Oh, also, I wanted to inform you that the Select Board recently voted to approve the transfer of a liquor license and a CV held at 88 War for that first-floor commercial space. The applicant will need to come before the Planning Board to amend the special permit to be consistent with the approved issuance of that liquor license and that common thick. Other than that, I did want to make sure, and I think, Denny, you touched upon it, for tonight's hearing on Randolph Ave, that there had been residents who had submitted letters. I just want, I didn't know if you guys had been able to access them in the shared folder, because we've been kind of working remotely, so I just wanted to make sure you saw them. I had a good chance to review them. Generally, the common themes that will probably come up are public safety related to traffic and overflow parking. And other than that, I can give you an update, but we can wait till we start talking about it on the 245 Highland Street grading. I just want to make sure that you guys had also been able to access the comments that Cheryl had provided, and then the update provided by the applicant. And I think that's all I have for you right now.
Thank you, Allison. Does anybody have questions for Allison?
No, thank you.
Okay. What I think we'll do is, as citizens speak, I see that there are a large volume of folks that have joined us tonight as attendees, which I presume will be related to our site plan approval. So with the Board's permission, I might have us go from Citizen Speak then to Highland Street, which I think will be quicker to get them in and out before we open up the Site Plan Approval Hearing.
Does that make sense?
Does that work for you guys? Okay. Okay, so now it's time for Citizen Speak. Anybody that has dialed in who wishes to address the Board is welcome to do so. We ask that you address the Board on items that are not on our agenda for this evening. So we have a public hearing for the Site Plan Approval at 584 Randolph Ave. If you've called in for that project, please wait until we open the hearing so that your comments are part of the public record. Same with 245 Highland Street. If you have other items, please feel free to raise your hand, and I see we have somebody who has done so. Brian Fers, you are unmuted. Please just say your name and address for the record.
Evening, everyone. Brian Fers, 630 Brush Hill Road, Precinct 10, Town Meeting Member, former Planning Board Member. Hello, everybody. Happy Holidays. As always, thank you for your time and energy to all things Milton. Just rising very quickly to talk about the condo conversion bylaw. And I know there was a meeting on it last week. I was unable to attend. I will try to attend the next one. As you all know, I was on the Board a couple of years ago. I got on the Board, and while I was on it, I tried several times to move through different bylaws for different versions of housing variations to create a diversity of housing stock. One of them was a condo conversion bylaw, and at the time, there was not a political will in the town to move any of those things forward. But I did want to rise tonight to encourage the Board to seriously think about promoting and approving the condo conversion bylaw at a future town meeting. As you know, I was here a few weeks ago, probably more than a few weeks ago now, to register concern about all of the 40Bs, specifically 582 Blue Hill Avenue. And I know that's in the hand of the ZBA, and encourage that the town will continue to work on that and all of the applications that are before us right now. I do believe we're numbering six or seven right now. This is what the Planning Board can do to continue to help us battle our ongoing lack of affordable housing problem in Milton and get us to a better place with diverse housing stock, and hopefully work towards a Housing Production Plan that gives us a stay of execution on 40B and allows us to have some control in our own town's development. Currently, there are three historic buildings at risk due to 40B, and there is 40B applications proposed for two 1-acre residential lots, which would, in total, get to us to almost 40 units on just those two acres. You know, we're in a tough spot in the town, and this Board, I think, is in a time in Milton where there is probably a political will to look towards bringing some diverse housing opportunity into the town and having the Planning Board do it in a guided and responsible way. So I encourage you all to continue doing the good work you're doing. Look at the bylaw closely. I think the guidelines are excellent. Ms. O'Donnell did a fantastic job even thinking about things like fire escapes, which are sometimes missed in things like guidelines. I would encourage you to consider a sunset. This guideline feels awful broad, but as you look towards solving our affordable housing percentage issue, perhaps as we near that 10% or 12%, that may be more desirable, we consider granting that back. I'm not sure if there's a legal solution to that or not, but it's something that I'd encourage you to think of. Anyway, I missed the last meeting. I wanted to encourage you to keep doing the good work. Register my support for the bylaw and promise to be at the next meeting to continue to do so on the record. Thank you again for your time and service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers for Citizen Speak? You could please raise your hand in the raise-hand function. See, we have 48 attendees. No additional hands raised. Okay, with that, I would ask that we re, I'm sorry, Denny, were you raising your hand?
No, I didn't mean to, sorry.
Or just moving your camera. I think we should move on now to 245 Highland Street. Would anybody who's representing the project just raise your hand? Okay, I see Jim Burke. Okay, Jim, can you?
Yep, Jamie.
And there's another person by the name of Daniel Carr. Is that somebody on your team also?
Yeah, he works for the siblings there.
Unmuted Daniel. Okay, is it just the two of you?
Yeah, I think that's some other people listening, but I don't know that we need to unmute anybody at this point.
Okay, so just to catch everybody up, this is a project that received a cluster, or a permit under the Cluster Zoning Bylaw two or three years ago. Has come back because the language stated that it was, the homes had to be constructed in strict compliance, and there were some grade changes to the plans as submitted, and the Commissioner and our Town Planner rightfully directed them back to the Board. We had an ample discussion about this at our last meeting. There was a request for you to go back and take a look at two of the lots that you had proposed changes on. I have some feedback from one of our members about that, but who is not with us. Cheryl Taguyas, who to review it if you haven't already seen it. But why don't you just give us a quick overview of what has been done?
Yeah, we received that feedback, and we've already revised and responded to it. I think we've addressed everything, but we go through it. So what we did, starting at number 30, Marine, which is the new road.
Actually, Jim, can you just, can I just ask you to pause for just one moment? Allison, is it possible for you to pull up this plan?
Oh, let me try. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Okay, continue, Jim, sorry.
So number 30, Marine, which would be Lot 4, I want to say. It's 4 and 1 we're dealing with, right? Lot 4 and Lot 1?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so it would be Lot 4 then. So the issue with that is that because there is a long, thin driveway, it's basically a pork chop lot, and the house was into the northwest corner of the lot, which is where the driveway is, that because of the grading that we have to do due to the clay in the soil, it resulted in a couple retaining walls there. We did a couple of things to get rid of those and to flatten out the, or to ease out the grading. We moved the house east and south as much as we could within the offsets, which got it away from that driveway. We also dropped the garage another, Daniel, what was it, another 18 inches, another two feet?
It was about two feet, yeah.
Yeah, below the first floor of the house. Because the garage is on a slab, not in a basement, we don't have as many limitations with the grading. That allowed us to lower the driveway and allowed us to alleviate those retaining walls that were basically between the two lots adjacent to it, which is what happened with those. And that basically allowed us to make the grade all around the house. You know, we still have to make up the same amount of space at the house, the same amount of height at the house, but it's a lot less severe, because the house is now farther away from the other lots, and that driveway is lowered in relation to the first floor of the house. So basically, now, within the house, the first floor, which is the basement, which is the section that has a basement, has three or four steps down into a mudroom, which is slab on grade, and then has two steps down into the garage, which is also slab on grade, as opposed to a basement. So there's no, obviously, flooding concerns with the flat area.
And you saw the comments, you're talking about Lot 1 still?
No, Lot 4. This is all Lot 1, which Cheryl's comments were, it looked good. So I wanted to get that one out of the way first.
Okay.
Are you able to see this okay on the screen?
Nope.
I don't see none.
I just see you three.
Fantastic. Okay, let me try and close out of it and see if we can get it back up.
So Cheryl reached out to me today and just mentioned that she wanted to make sure that we were protecting the trees in the upper right corner.
That's for Lot 1.
That's Lot 1.
Okay. And then?
There's no protected trees on Lot 4.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So then, I don't believe she had any additional comments on Lot 4. On Lot 1, the only comments were the trees in the upper right corner and making sure that the trees remain protected during construction so that no?
Yeah, absolutely. So we did two rounds of pulling the grade in from the, so there's a couple of things. There's a couple of trees she identified. There's the, start with the easy ones, which is the two up against the old property line, which is the stone wall that are on the edge of the conservation land and well away from our lot line. So I don't think there's any danger to those trees in particular. Though the two trees, one in particular, it's actually on the property in the top right corner. Our first submission, we had brought the grade lines and kind of made a curve around the tree. Cheryl asked us to bring that back further so that there is no grade line around the tree, which we've done here. Basically, she drew some lines on a plan and asked us to move our grade lines to there, which we've done. The other thing she asked us to do, which we did, which I didn't, is to basically, from the lot line towards the house, to make those grade changes, spread them out so that it's less of a steep hill, which we've also done. We also, which, in order to protect the trees in the front of the lot, we straightened out the driveway so that it is a straight shot. And the one deciduous tree there will now be protected. And then we changed the grades between the front of the house and the road to accommodate for the three pine trees that you see along the road.
Daniel, did you have anything to add?
No, I think Jim did a good job of describing the changes.
Okay. Anyone on the Board have any questions, comments, concerns?
I just wanted to say thank you for reducing the, on Lot 4, to move the house and then lower the garage so that you got rid of some of those retaining walls and some of the grade changes on that driveway, I think are great. And I'd like to thank you for making that change. And I also want to thank you for addressing the situation on Lot 1 with the trees, and because that was a real concern the last time around, so thank you.
You got it. Yeah, there'll be, just, and you may, this may be what you're trying to, but there's now no retaining walls on Lot 4, so we've gotten rid of them completely.
Yeah, I'm happy to see that.
Denny or Rich, do you have, do you have any feedback?
No.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank them as well, and I also wanted to see if the staff had any advice or suggestions for us in finalizing our decisions.
Denny, I think that the applicants have been responsive to the concerns that were raised by the Board, and it appears there's nothing outstanding. I can't see a reason why you couldn't, you know, support the application and move forward with an approval.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate your insights. Thank you.
So it sounds as though we are prepared to take a vote on this. I'm just pulling up our notes from our last meeting to figure out what that vote is supposed to be. This would be to amend the special permit for cluster development that was issued in April of '27. So Kathleen, I don't know if you have any suggestions on how to word this vote. I mean, are we just approving the revised plan?
Um, yeah, I think we're just, you know, that unfortunately, because we have this language in some of our permits that say strict compliance, where you can't change a knothole on a board without getting our approval, I think we would just be saying that we are approving the substitution of these revised grading plans for the plans submitted with the special permit.
Okay.
And April, did you mean to say 2017?
Yes, what did I say?
27, but I know what you meant.
So I have a text here from Tim telling us that our vote is to authorize the changes that deviate from the approved plan of permit of cluster development issued for Marine Estates. So we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Not that we can do a roll call vote. Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much, Cheryl. And we're sorry about the kind of confusion in the way this whole work, the whole thing worked out for you at the last meeting, but we do appreciate your additional work on this, and very much Denny and Cheryl for flagging some of these issues, and we'll move forward with this beautiful project, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving us up in the schedule as well.
Okay. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is actually a public hearing for Site Plan Approval for 584 Randolph Avenue. We have 53 attendees with us this evening. So what I would ask is, we're going to hear from the applicant's summary of their project. Then we will hear from the members of the public who wish to offer some comments, and if we could keep those comments to just a couple of minutes, so we give everybody a chance. Before we do open this hearing, we do have another item on our agenda under Old Business, which is 2021 zoning articles. We had intended perhaps to have a more substantive discussion about them tonight. Just on some revisions to the map that Tim was working on for the condo conversion bylaw. We don't have any of that new material. We don't have enough to have a substantive discussion about it tonight. So if anybody was calling in for that purpose, don't hang around waiting, because we're not going to have people to say on the policy. Although I will say, we might talk a little bit just about the timeframes and the process for moving forward and scheduling a public hearing, but the policy, I don't think we'll have an in-depth conversation about. So I believe we have Marion with us this evening, representing the product, but let me just see.
April, can you see? I pulled up the site plan. Are you able to see that?
No.
Fantastic. Let me try and figure it out.
Can I just ask if April can be at all my evening meetings to do that little thing that she just did, where you don't have to stay all night, because I have sat through so many meetings. It's been there 11 o'clock at night, and then it just goes, whoo, off the table.
That's why I'm trying to be courteous. Okay, Marion McCadrick, I believe you're representing the project, and I have unmuted you. I don't know if there's others on your team that should be unmuted as well.
Yes, and, well, Andrew O'Connor, who's one of the applicants, is here. Terry McGovern, the engineer from Stendbeck as Taylor, is here. And there may be an architect from Rockwood Design. I don't know his name. But Terry McGovern definitely, because he's going to be going through the site plan with you. And Andrew O'Connor should be unmuted for whenever there are questions that he needs to answer.
Yes, I'm taking it as McGovern W. It must be Terry McGovern.
Terry McGovern, yeah.
Thanks, Marion. The representative from the architecture firm is Patricia Fisher.
Got it. Okay, so what we will have you do is, Marion, you can set up the project, and then you can give your presentation. I guess we'll just turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Marion McCadrick, I'm an attorney representing the applicants. And what I'd like to do is to provide a basic introduction to the project, a summary of it. And I want to say right off the bat that we are well aware that there are concerns about traffic. We've been reading the comments on, available online. And we knew this. We know what the intersection is like. The applicant is in the process of hiring a traffic engineer, and we will be developing more detailed information. We will not be presenting that tonight, but we will want to, we certainly hope to be able to hear as many comments as possible from neighbors and others who want to comment on that. I'm not going to talk about that in my summary particularly, but I did want to make sure that you realize we're well aware of that concern, and we do want to be addressing it. So this is a site at the intersection of Reedstale Road and Randolph Avenue. It's a very busy intersection. There's a state highway that runs through here. And in addition to this application, we have also filed an application with the Milton Board of Appeals, because this plan, if it goes forward, will require relief from the Board of Appeals. It needs a use variance and some other smaller dimensional variances. We have not received information about a hearing date yet from the Board of Appeals. I know that these two applications are, have to be integrated, so I imagine that after this hearing tonight, that the Planning Board will allow some substantial time in order for the, hopefully, the Board of Appeals to get to at least their initial hearing before you come back. That'll also give us time to look at developing our traffic information for you and also to complete peer review of the stormwater design. This lot, this is a 30,815 square foot lot. It slopes up from the street and then levels off. It has five sides, and it has frontage on two streets, Randolph Ave and Reedstale Road. At the present time, there's a two-family home on the site, which is a pre-existing, non-conforming use. So the proposal before you tonight is for reuse of the site and for reuse of a portion of the existing house as a funeral home. The applicants, Andrew and Paul O'Connor, both live in Milton and have for many years operated a funeral home in Dorchester. Although the O'Conners' proposal will reuse the original house, which was constructed in 1818, and generally maintain its exterior appearance, this is not a historic renovation project. But by keeping the house in place, which is, which was the earliest part of the structure, some of the historic character of this corner will be maintained, and some of the residential appearance of this parcel will be maintained. The intersection itself has changed hugely, of course, since the house was constructed. Now, there's, as I've already said, a lot of traffic. The site faces a commercial strip, dentist's office, and a convenience store, residential hospice, and St. Elizabeth's Church. There is a basis for granting a use variance here because of the changes all around this residence in a residential district. But there are still residential uses to the rear and the sides. So any change of use needs to be compatible with the existing residential uses, needs to provide for adequate parking, and needs to provide for proper traffic management. The plan right now is to keep the house but remove a connector and barn in back of the house. A new addition will be constructed in place of those parts of the house at the same height as the existing house. There will be two viewing rooms or chapels on the first floor, which will be the area open to the public. Those rooms will seat approximately 50 if they're completely full. And once COVID-19 social distancing is no longer necessary, they wouldn't seat that many now, because they have to keep people much further apart. 20 parking spaces would be created on the site, including one handicap parking space. The main entrance will be handicapped accessible with handicapped parking spaces nearby. And the current driveway entrance will be maintained, but it will, but it will be, there will be a paved driveway going in from that entrance up around the back, all the way around the building, and back out to the entrance again. So there will be a driveway circling the entire building. There will be fencing and landscaping added to the site, along with some freestanding lighting to be used only when the funeral home is open. We've spent, I've spent a lot of time, and the O'Conners have spent a lot of time with their engineers and their architects, studying whether the existing house can be renovated inside for this purpose, studying how much space could be created outside for parking, how much parking would be required, how many cars would circulate in and out of the site. And they have also considered the type of impact this use would have compared to a more commercial use or a higher-density residential use. Neither of those are zoned uses at this time for this site, but because of the changes in this intersection, I would anticipate that at one time or another, whether or not this proposal is approved, there will be other proposals for some kind of somewhat different use for this lot. So at least on the opinion of these applicants, this use is a relatively low-impact use. It's not as commercial looking as a lot of other uses and it's not as, as it won't introduce as much constant traffic as some other uses might. The O'Conners did consider the option of removing the house altogether and probably having to wait out demolition delay. But they've concluded that the house is a feature of the location, it's historically significant, and should be maintained if possible. So this is a way to maintain some part of the intersection's history and some aspects of its residential appearance. We will be working with the traffic engineer to provide a traffic evaluation and more details about traffic circulation on site and entering and exiting the site. And we are working with a peer review engineer on the stormwater management plan right now. And as I said already, we expect this hearing will be continued until after the Board of Appeals has begun its hearing process. And any additional information we have in the meantime will be made available to the planning board and hopefully we put on their website. What I'd like to do now is ask the project engineer, Terry McGovern, to explain the site plan in more detail. You can already see it on the screen here. And he'll, he'll at least explain selected pages. The site plan page is quite complex. It has a lot of information on it. So I'm hoping we can enlarge that. But in any case, Terry, if that's okay, I'll ask Terry to take over now.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, for the record, Terry McGovern from Stand Beck and Taylor Engineers. We were the project engineers and developed this site plan for the O'Conners. And I can try to make my presentation as clear and as brief as possible because I know there are a lot of people who want to make comment on this. So we can, we can probably skip the construction detail sheets. Those usually put people to sleep. The site, as Marion explained, is a thirty thousand eight hundred square foot site. And in general, the house sits at the top of the hill, the existing structure and the connecting hallway into the barn garage area sits at the top of the hill. And it slopes down towards Reeddale Road and down towards Randolph Ave to the west with the existing driveway to the house in, on that southeast corner, that paved driveway. And presently, that paved driveway comes up, extends to a concrete apron that was actually part of a roofed-over structure. And then there's some pavement that extends around the back of the property and ends kind of at the back of the garage. At the top of the slope behind the garage to the, to the east, going towards the abutting residential properties, there's some wide open area. And then there's kind of an extensive tree buffer along the, the edge of the property. And the slope in that area is a lot flatter than certainly the, the hill going down to Reeddale and Randolph Ave. On this site plan, and we're, we're showing those contour lines in all of the existing conditions. All of the utilities come in from the Reeddale roadside. There's an existing catch basin located directly in front of the lot now, plus some other utilities as well in that immediate area, including hydrant, electric, water service all come in from that side. There's a newer residential structure immediately to the right. Another older residential structure with a garage that abouts us. One more locus over to which the extent, the rear of the property extends around towards, as well as a couple of existing residential structures on Cottage Ave to our rear and another larger residential lot immediately to the north. There's a concrete walkway that extends down to Randolph Ave and to the sidewalk area. This plan shows the extent, it was the cleanest plan to show the extent of the areas where we did test pits on the site for our stormwater management system, which is, has just been through peer review and we received comments today on. So we did several pits along the front of the property, the Reeddale Road and Randolph Avenue side. We also did several pits in the level area where the majority of the parking would be to the rear for the intent to be to place stormwater and to drain it into leaching structures under the surface of that new parking area. The remainder of the lot as it is now, around the back is dirt and lawn area with lawn area extending down, as is in keeping with the residential property. If you can move to the next sheet, I can walk you through how the layout of the site will look. So the, the site plan on sheet three shows the changes that we're making to the site as outlined predominantly in red, being that we're using the same driveway location for access into the site. And those red arrows that you see indicate the direction of a general planned traffic flow through the site, which is to come in. We will widen that driveway slightly, but come in and have traffic flow move in a counterclockwise direction around the site to the area of parking spaces to be located to that easterly side, some with our, including our handicap spaces closer to the building where the barn has been removed. The remainder of a total of ten spaces at the perimeter facing the abutment to the southeast and towards Cottage Place with some existing tree buffer screening to remain and some fencing to be provided in both of those locations as well. So there'll be fencing in, screening in both of those locations as the parking faces head in. We are proposing a roundabout driveway or driveway that will wrap around so that a portion of this rear of the building will be where the, the vehicle, the hearse vehicle will be garaged and is intended to be as a drive-through so that as people who come out of the funeral home queue up, that queuing can be done entirely within the site and not extend out into the street until it's time for people to, until it's time to head off, off-site to the cemetery. We're showing a walkway roughly in the location of the existing walkway that comes up from the corner of Randolph Ave. That will be a paver walk, which will provide a more, more pervious surface. It will also extend around to the, what will be the new entrance, roughly in the location of the existing entrance to the house. We're proposing a carport so that people can come underneath and if we're helping older people in, we can park there temporarily, assist them out of the vehicle and into the, the funeral home. That is pretty similar to having just a portico area. We're showing to the northeast corner, we're going to place a rain garden. This will show up a little more prominently on the landscape plan. We're proposing rain gardens to capture runoff from this looped driveway in two locations to the northeast corner where soils is suitable, as well as to the, kind of the southerly side along Reeddale Road. We're also proposing to place a slotted drain across that driveway. Again, to capture runoff from cascading directly down onto the road, although it does flow, flow to that location. Now, this is an improvement that will interrupt it and bring it over into that rain garden area where it has a chance to settle out. Likewise, along the, the head of the, or the elbow, if you will, of the loop driveway, we have a guardrail and a stone diaphragm trench that will serve to both remove any particulates as well as slow and filter the runoff that comes off of that driveway in that location. In the rear of the property, we have two sets of catch basins in the larger parking field. Those will go to an extensive under, under pavement drainage system consisting of several leaching pits with stone around them. Those pits are designed, they're concrete pits designed for vehicular loading, H twenty loading with sufficient cover over them. And we'll have the extent of the parking driveway surrounded by a twelve-inch Cape Cod berm as well. We also have a small landscape berm that will extend around the rear parking field that will be between twelve and eighteen inches high that will serve to contain stormwater on site. So that between the, the Cape Cod berm and our earthen berm traveling around the site. And that, those parking spaces that you see where the little numbers are, those actually are graded in such a way that they pitch back into us. Our catch basins are located at the foot of the parking rather than the head of the parking where the, the bumpers are shown. They're located at the foot of the parking. So the slope will be about two inches tipping back into us again with the earthen berm beyond it to keep, keep stormwater on the site and not have anything running off in any way onto the adjacent properties. I think if you go to the next plan, probably shows the extent of the grading changes. The rear of the site will generally be leveled off to the approximate grade that it is now. There is a high point. Because I can't move my cursor around, it's pretty much just where the little jog in the adjacent property is. There's a high point that will be maintained, kind of where you see the handicap parking adjacent to the building. From there, that grade of approximately one twenty-seven will slope down to about one twenty-six and a half and then back up again to about one twenty-seven-two-ish at the head of the parking. So you have a fairly level area in that location. As you wrap around, you'll obviously dip with the existing contours as that driveway works its way around in the loop. We do show a retaining wall kind of at the closest point to the property line, which is still some distance off of the sidewalk. There's about a four or five-foot spacing in there, but about where one of the prominent arrows is kind of on the west side. And you can see, if you can see it clearly, there's a seventeen-foot dimension, which is the driveway and walkway width. Just beyond that will be a retaining wall in that location for grading with plantings below it. That's at the, the closest point where we come near the property line. And in our retaining, or our rain garden, rather, sits just beyond that. And that area will have a kind of a low-level wood guardrail that will travel around it. To the immediate east or southeast, the first residential property at Reeddale Road, we're proposing a grade wall that has been discussed without a butter that will be right along that property line, which will help ensure that stormwater stays on our property along with the Cape Cod berm. And will provide a little bit of an attractive feature along that, that you won't have an expansive set of, basically an expansive grass that kind of looked like, looks like it blends together into their property. We have a sign that will be a little bit better seen on the landscape plan. It will also be in that general location. We are proposing a total of seven pole lights. I hope you have the lighting plan in there that we'll get to that momentarily. The lights will be ten-foot high, an LED light fixture that is DocSky compliant. We have a couple of under-portico lights, two of them for the garage overhang, as well as some wall mount fixtures at the doorway. And then I can kind of touch on the lighting photometrics when we get to that plan as well. If you can move forward maybe to the, the landscape plan, we could, we can probably jump over the construction details. And yep, okay, so the landscape plan, which also kind of helps show where our impervious surface and our planting buffers are shown on the property makes it a little, little cleaner. We have an extensive landscape plan that proposes approximately two dozen new trees on the site that will be five to six-foot height or two to three-inch caliper. Several of those trees will be at the, kind of at the corner buffers. We're proposing to leave in that, that southeast side where that first parking field is, there are several large twenty, eighteen, I'd say between eighteen and thirty-inch pine trees in that area. We're proposing to leave most of those trees, put a board fence just inside of it, a four-foot height fence that would block any glare from headlights out to the abutting property. Likewise, with those parking, where other parking spaces head in facing the northeast. Again, we're going to try to leave some of the vegetation, although that's a little bit scrubbier in that area and provide a board fence across that area where those, those parking spaces head in as well. We're providing two islands in that rear area that will be some landscape mounds with plantings in them. Again, the purpose being to, besides the landscape featuring to provide a containment for stormwater in that parking field so that it doesn't make its way off the property. To the northwest side, that side slope will be extensively planted with shrubs and with some flowering trees, as well as the feature area as you look in from Randolph Ave and Reeddale Road, you can see several of the plantings in pink, orange, and yellow in that area, which is where more of your flowering shrubs and perennials will be located. And there's an extensive planting list that's associated with both of the rain gardens in that area. And Mr. Palmieri has made some comments regarding those that we will be working with him again on. We show the, the sign mock-up to the upper right corner of this. I think there's also a fence detail kind of over to this right side that would show the fence detail in that, that back area as well. And if you can move to the photometric plan, I think that would be, that's the second sheet shows some of the examples of.
Sorry.
That's okay. Photometric plan, which is the last sheet, I think is a if we can get that up there. Okay.
Which direction? Do you know where it is?
Go back. You, you had it. There wasn't a lot of printing on it. That's the photo.
Sorry, I went by too quickly.
Nope. Okay, the, and it, being on Zoom, it's obviously scanned and a little bit faded out. But what we're showing, I think the key feature on the photometric plan is, again, as, as I mentioned before, we're showing seven, a total of seven light poles spaced throughout the site, several of them surrounding the loop driveway. There'd be two in the rear, which would be your northerly property line. One along the, or I should say two along the, the elbow, if you will, or the bend of the loop driveway closest to the Reeddale roadside. Another light pole shows up approximately where that, that very small jog is in the immediate southeast residential property. And then two others in the parking field area for a total of seven going around. The blue light, or blue line that you see that kind of takes its way around the edge of the pavement is your cutoff of a tenth of a foot candle for limits of lighting around the property. And then the red line that you see that extends out beyond it from the photometric plan that kind of waves around is the limit of what we would consider to be ambient light, which is, which is about one to two hundredths of a foot candle, not much greater than what you would see looking out of windows of the house if, if in fact many of the lights were on, or if you had a porch light on or something of that nature. Again, the, there were details of the fixtures. There were attractive fixtures, LED lighting from Granite City Electric. The wall mount that you can see on the bottom are, those fixtures are designed to point straight down and not have any glare or light beyond the ninety-degree plane to the fixture where it meets the housing. The two kind of square fixtures. The two kind of square fixtures that you see off to the corner are your under portico lights, so they're not a large, those are not intended to be a large box light like you might see in a parking lot of a supermarket. That's not the intent of what we're doing here. We have the fixtures that are the lower-level LED lights. And again, this has been shaped in such a way and moved around in such a way that the the limits of the lighting are in compliance with the Milton requirements. I think that probably covers everything that we need to put forward. Again, the construction details just show a lot of the physical components that are going to be installed on the site including the storm water management structures, which are precast and details of handicap ramps, sidewalks, et cetera, that some of the peer review picked up some minor comments on these. Most of his notes were regarding storm water. So with that, I will step back and allow the architect to take over for a couple of minutes so that we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Marion, do you have another presenter?
Yes, there's a representative from the architectural firm that has designed the the renovations to the house and the new addition. And let's see, you told me what
Yeah, it's Patricia Fisher.
Patricia Fisher, sorry. She's here, and if you would recognize her, she would, we will need to find the drawings, which are, should be in this package.
Yeah. Hold on, let me see if it's in a different.
It'll take a minute. We don't need to go through the storm water summary.
Do you know if they're further down? Do you have a?
I'll tell you where they are.
Thank you, Marion.
Exhibits. Just looking through the list of exhibits here.
No, that's okay. It's just, it's really difficult for me to toggle back and forth from.
Yeah. Okay, architectural concept plans is exhibit B. It would be after, right after the site plan.
Hold on. Start over.
Okay.
I don't see the exhibit B here.
Not seeing it in my packet.
It was in the, it's in the packet right with the form application.
It's not with the site plan. Right.
It's with the application itself.
Yes. It's site plan, it's, well, yeah, it has a separate title page. Building plans.
Oh, okay, it's in there.
Yeah, Marion, I'm not.
You're not finding it?
Yeah, this is all I have.
Form, look under where it says 1117, Form SPA.
Form SPA?
Yeah.
I don't know. That's, I only have one sheet in here.
That's good. Well, oh, you only have one sheet?
Yeah.
Any sheet to that. That's where it was. Look at the next one, Site Plan Approval Application. How about that one? The second one, one down, that highlighted.
This is, I think, what we were just looking at.
If you would allow me to share, I can actually bring them up. I have them on my thumb drive right here.
Okay, so let me stop screen share and
It seems our attachment fee is not in our
Okay, yeah, it should be, but we'll find it. A few pages.
Did I get paper copies? Of everything?
No.
I actually did find it. I printed, I did get paper copies from
Everyone got a paper copy. Unless you didn't pick it up, we provided them. But I think screen sharing will help us tonight so that we can just look at this.
Mike, is there a way to promote the architect to co-host so that they can share their screen?
All right, so are we promoting Patricia Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Tricia, you are now a panelist, so you should be able to share screen. Patricia, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me talking?
No, we can now.
Oh, okay.
Are you able to share a screen and show the plans?
I think that that's answer is yes.
Okay.
I'm opening up. I'm opening up my drawings. I didn't have them open.
Yes, apologies. And I apologize to all the attendees on this meeting. Zoom is not a perfect format. We're doing the best that we can so that everybody can see the same materials, so just bear with us for a moment, please.
We're also having, we're struggling a little bit too. We're working remotely and accessing our OneDrive from home is not as easy as it should be, so apologies.
We're a staff member down, so.
They're town hall down.
Yes.
All right, I have my, I have my drawings open. I'm going to try and share my screen.
Great.
Yes, I need you to come in here, please. I have a teenager on standby.
Excellent. We all need one.
Yeah, do screen share, please. Oh, there we go. Oh, right there, right there. Okay. Can you see that?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Oh, all right. All right, can everyone see my drawings here?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, I am Pat Fisher. I'm an architect. I'm representing Rockwood Design. The lead architect on this project is Phil Baker. And he and his wife are in the delivery room right now, and he wisely chose not to sign in for this meeting. Represent our team as best I can. This sheet right here shows the existing conditions at the building. These are more elevations of the existing building. And this is the proposal for the renovations to the building. We're going to remove the old sections, the garage, the connecting piece, the barn, and we're going to add more viewing rooms or chapels, as they're called. We will be making the building handicapped accessible. We will be adding appropriate numbers of toilets for the number of people at the building. We'll be adding offices and showrooms for the sales of the parts and pieces of a funeral, caskets, that sort of thing. Let me get down to the floor plan here. All right, so this is the new first floor floor plan. We have the ramp that comes up from the handicap parking and the rest of the parking. The front stairs, when you enter, you'll be in an entry hall. There'll be a chapel or viewing room on either side of the entry hall. Towards the back will be a hallway where the toilets are located, the vertical platform lift to the second floor, the stairs to the second floor, and then the other exit. On the back or the left side of the building, we have the garage. Per Massachusetts code, the body needs to be removed undercover of a garage into the funeral home, so that will always take place in there. The embalming room and the other features of the body preparation are located in that back area off the garage. And then, as I had said, we have a second floor space. And this space will have the offices, the employee break rooms, and the showroom for the business part of the funeral. The the intent for the look of the building is in keeping with the residential neighborhood, the aspects of the residential neighborhood and the historic look of the building. The exact materials, windows, siding, trim, those haven't been selected yet, but it is the intent for the building to continue to have the residential look and the historic look that it does have now. We can address further in future meetings the exact material selections once we get a little further down the road with you people. So I guess I'm open to taking any questions at the appropriate time.
Okay. Marion, does this conclude your presentation, or do you have another speaker?
No, that concludes it, and we'd be interested in taking questions and hearing comments.
Okay, great. So thank you very much for the presentation. Just for the benefit of the public, this is a site plan approval. As you heard earlier from the applicant, the use variance is not before us. The planning board does not have the jurisdiction to make determinations on whether or not this can be an alternate use. That will go before the zoning board of appeals as well, a couple of other things like adequacy of parking. The conditions for the planning board to run decisions on site plan approval are a relatively short list. I'm just going to break them off so that everybody has the appropriate information. But the conditions for site plan approval for the, per the Milton zoning by law are protection of adjoining premises, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjoining streets, adequacy of disposal of sewage, refuse, and other wastes, and adequacy of drainage for surface water, adequacy of space for loading and deliveries, unit density and proximity of adjacent buildings, adequacy of lighting. So the board may reject any plans that fail to meet standards for health, safety, welfare, and amenities for future occupants. Of course, this will not have any. Or for the adjacent properties or the neighborhood. So we have a rather limited list of jurisdiction on this project. But we would very much like to hear from the public. We thank you very much for dialing in. As I said, Zoom format is not a perfect way to hear these projects for us, but it actually opens quite a bit of opportunity for the public to engage where you may not otherwise be sitting in town hall for several hours at a time, listening to us. This makes it a little easier, and we're happy to have you with us tonight. So we have a number of things that we still need to do on this application. You heard the applicant say a couple of times in their presentation that they need to come back, they need to come back. So one thing you should know is we are not rendering any decisions tonight. We may not even have a substantive debate. We have materials that need to be reviewed. The storm water peer review was only submitted today, so all of our departments need to review that. Our planning department and our engineering department. It sounds as though there's going to be some additional traffic study work, which we will need to review. So I'm just laying this out so you know that this is really the beginning of the process, and there's a lot more to contemplate as we move forward. So with that, I would very much like to open it up to public comment. If you could please raise your hand if you would like to speak, and we'll call on you in the order that you raise your hand. The only rules are that you please say your name and address for the record. If you could kindly keep your comments to, you know, three or four minutes, that would be great, or less if you wish. And I think that's it. So the first person who has their hand raised is Kate Daly. I'm just going to unmute you. And if you could please state your name and address for us, you might have to unmute yourself as well. There you go.
Great, yes, I'm Dan Daly, 15 Quarry Lane. And thank you for allowing me to speak. So first of all, it's very disappointing that this project is going before the planning board this evening without information concerning traffic mitigation. The Quarry Lane neighbors have serious concerns regarding the traffic that this funeral home will create and the danger that it will create to our children. As you know, the vehicle access will be only feet from one of the busiest intersections in Milton, the Randolph Ave Reed's Dale intersection. In addition, during non-COVID times, this intersection is incredibly busy, especially at the evening rush hour, when cars regularly back up to the Pleasant-Gun Hill intersection. I don't see how cars will be able to enter or exit this funeral home safely during the evening rush. Entering and exiting would be dangerous to traffic. And I see no reason why we should allow this property, for this purpose, continuing, considering the danger to the public and the increased traffic loads this project would cause. We already suffer from significant traffic loads in this neighborhood. Why we would entertain additional traffic loads is beyond me. Finally, the funeral home does not have adequate parking. Do the other funeral homes in Milton have so few on-site spots or so few public parking spots? We have yet to see a plan that accommodates what is sure to be a high parking demand at the site. And parking in this neighborhood, the Quarry Lane neighborhood, Lodge Street neighborhood, may cause danger to neighborhood children as parkers from out of town will come in and our children are not habituated to live in a commercial zone. This residential neighborhood has really no interest in hosting parking so that the funeral home can do business. Finally, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. this evening, my wife and I garnered 16 signatures from the Quarry Lane neighborhood in opposition of this site approval plan. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Dan. The next hand is Christian. So I am going to unmute you. You could please say your full name and address. That would be great.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Christian Limecooler, 72 Badger Circle. I'm not as eloquent as Dan, but traffic's already backed up to Gun Hill, if not past that. I did notice the 20 parking spaces. I missed the beginning of this. The question I have is, where's the overflow parking for this currently planned for?
That is a good question. I just want to just reiterate that parking issue is actually an issue before the ZBA. So you're, please feel welcome to relay your comments so that they can be on the record here, but the parking specifically would be a ZBA issue. And this, these projects unfortunately are a little bit disjointed because you have to go before two boards. So the use variance and the issue of parking adequacy will go before the zoning board of appeals. When that decision is rendered, they'll come back to us for site plan approval. So oftentimes, both hearings are opened at a similar time. But those two issues specifically will have to be decided before the zoning board of
Okay, all right, so that's fair. So I guess I'll pigpile on what Mr. Daly said. So assuming there is no parking, I'll just take that assumption first. If they're going to park on the street or anywhere else, the traffic's a mess as it is already. I haven't been to a wake in a funeral home earlier than four or later than eight, and that's typically the worst time for traffic around that intersection anyway. Traffic is backed up all over the place. We're already starting to back up into side neighborhoods on Pleasant Street. I'm not sure how we are looking at an architect rendering of this place, and we haven't even figured out how we're going to seat cars or people. Not only that, during COVID, there's a non-COVID side when traffic is worse. There's the COVID side when traffic may not be as bad, but there's way more pedestrians walking, getting exercise, out there trying to get out of their houses for a little bit. The pedestrian The pedestrian traffic is a lot higher on that corner as it is right now. Let's assume they want to park across the street, which I know is not the issue here. You also add the pedestrian traffic crossing that major intersection at Reedsdale and Randolph. It's just a mess. I don't know how we can justify it. I don't know how anybody could justify putting this here, but I'll just put my two cents in like that for now, and listen to everybody else.
Thank you. Okay. So the next speaker, John Cronin.
Hey, good evening, everyone. John Cronin, 77 Center Lane, lifelong resident of Milton, and I would just like to speak tonight in support of the project. And my view and the reasoning behind that is fairly clear. At the current site, you know, we have a residential property that's been under maintained for years, and as a result, it's become fairly rundown over the last number of years. And, you know, as has been mentioned previously, the proposed site sits at the intersection of what has clearly evolved into a commercial setting. And I would argue that that has actually improved the landscape with the additions of things like the seasoned hospice facility and others. So I think the proposal, given that it would be a residential structure, would actually further that improvement and fit nicely with what's there currently. I would also add that I think, you know, the prospect of this becoming another commercial development, you know, this would be a facility that produces tax revenue for the town without further taxing our school system, which we all know, for those of us with kids in the school system today, has become a major issue. And part of the reason we're told the kids aren't back in the classroom full time is that our facilities are overstretched. So with that in mind, you know, what we certainly don't need is the prospect for another residential development or another commercial use that would produce, you know, more constant traffic flow as opposed to more intermittent interruption with this proposal. So for those reasons, I'm in support of the proposal and the project, and thank you for the time, and happy holidays.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cheryl Sibley.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Chair Anderson, and thank you, board members. I will do my best to be brief this evening, although certainly the applicant did, you know, put before us quite a large proposal. So I will do my best to be brief, but I do want to raise some issues with some of what's included in the plan. Obviously, as the applicant stated, this project is on a two-concurrent tracks of review. Obviously, this site plan approval, and then obviously the special permit request before the Board of Appeals, and a host of not insignificant variances that they are seeking. And I do want to just take some issue with some of what's been included in the application, the first of which is the qualification that 584 Randolph Ave is no longer suited to a residential use, and they cite the volume and noise of traffic. It's really unclear on what basis the applicant has made that determination. This has been residential property since 1918. It is directly surrounded on either side and both in the rear by residential properties. I will take note that for both the applicant and one of the supporters of the project who mentioned the commercial entities that are in the area, those are actually serviced and accessed by the four-lane portions of Randolph Ave and Reedsdale Road or Route 28. So I would just cite that distinction as well. Certainly, and as others have alluded, of all the criteria that is under consideration by this board, and that which is most troubling and for which really no set of reasonable conditions can be imposed to address it really is the overwhelming traffic. And anyone who travels or lives near this intersection knows that Route 28 is a high-speed, dangerous roadway. The speed and congestion, in fact, on this roadway has been well documented in the Chickataby-Route 28 intersection study. And though I know that is somewhat dated, I think it's impressive to note that in that study, they cited that the daily traffic volumes to be 26,000 to 29,000 vehicles. I think it's important that we actually pause on that number. That is a staggering number of vehicles that travel on this road daily. And again, I would submit that was, I believe, a 2016 study. As others have mentioned, even now in the midst of a pandemic, the traffic has not abated at all. In fact, it certainly has gotten much worse. And so I would be happy to see the applicant actually conduct some sort of a traffic study so they can see what I'm certain would yield increased traffic results. However, at this point in time, I don't think it would be a fair assessment to conduct such a study because, again, this is in the midst of a pandemic, where the majority of schools are either closed, you know, intermittently, so we have hybrid school schedule, and we also have a number of individuals who are working from home. So I query whether it would even be possible to have an accurate traffic study conducted. As the board knows, I did submit photos from multiple dates and times that shows the traffic routinely backed up on Randolph Ave as far back as Milton Academy. And on Reedsdale Road, that traffic backs up all the way up onto Pleasant, sometimes as close to or up to Loopun Hill Road. So I, again, will echo those sentiments expressed by others before me regarding the traffic issue. Further regarding traffic, the applicant has stated that the traffic for the funeral home is not commuter traffic, but that it would be confined to specific afternoon and evening times. And so I certainly would submit that that is traffic, that is commuter traffic. Those are prime time commuting hours. And it's well known that wakes are held from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. I would simply direct the board to the O'Conners' own website for their Dorchester location that just this week showed two wakes scheduled from 4:00 to 8:00, one this past Monday and one tomorrow night. So I think what we're really looking at is a perfect storm of traffic. The busiest time for the funeral home would coincide with the busiest time for the evening and afternoon commuting traffic. And unlike the suggestion that other commercial entities would have constant traffic, frankly, any sort of traffic that would come in some sort of sequence as opposed to a massive hit at, again, at that same time as the commuting traffic would almost be favorable. I would also just mention in terms of the use and the use intensity with respect to the parking that was mentioned. Again, the applicant is citing the existing pandemic and the COVID-19 public health restrictions in those estimates. I would say that the parking that's included in the plan is insufficient. I know that there is some conversation, discussions about having an overflow parking agreement with St. Elizabeth's. And first of all, I would just simply say that that's not a guarantee. Obviously, that would require approval by the property management office of the Archdiocese. Secondly, that would create a very dangerous pedestrian situation because anybody who would park at St. Elizabeth's would cross the street where that parking lot opens. They would not walk up the sidewalk to the intersection, and somebody will get hurt, and frankly, somebody might even get killed. And no police detail will be able to eliminate that risk because, again, pedestrians are not going to walk up to the crosswalk at the intersection. And certainly even as in its present state, if they were to use those existing crosswalks, they are completely inadequate pedestrian facilities at this time. There are no audio alerts, and there are no tactile warning surfaces. So those are wholly inappropriate for this purpose. In terms of the lighting, I believe the applicant suggested there were seven pole lights. This, again, would have to, many of these would fall within the 10-foot setback, which, again, would require Board of Appeals variance from the required 30 feet. That's going to bring vehicles closer to the back lots. There's going to be lighting, bring lighting closer to the back lots, and I have serious concerns about that light pollution to the back neighbors. Again, a permanent commercial and illuminated sign would bring another commercial feature to this facility. And then just lastly, in terms of the proposed impact of the development, the funeral home is not well suited to this location. This is a residential area. The plan is not residential in appearance. It's a huge driveway, it's bright lights, it's lit signage. And the convenient location that it references in the application is really convenient only for the funeral home and not for anyone else. So to say that the funeral home would be a better neighbor for residential abudders than other possible commercial uses, again, number one presumes that the Board of Appeals and its wisdom would actually allow such a usage. But again, secondly, I would suggest that its prime hours of operation would conflate with the prime commuting hours of the afternoon and evening commute. So I would just, at this time, I actually would agree with the applicant's suggestion that this board stay any decision regarding the site plan approval pending the decision by the Board of Appeals regarding the special permit and the significant zoning relief that would be required for this project to go forward. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And do you mind just saying your address for the record?
Yes, 578 Randolph Avenue.
Sorry if I missed it. Thank you very much. That's very helpful. The next person is Martha Susie.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Martha Susie. I am one of the owners of 580 Randolph Ave. I'm also a lifelong resident of Milton. We are directly abutting the proposed property. My family has owned this property for over 80 years, and there has always been a family member living here. I'm speaking out against this project. If the proposal were to be approved, it would be great detriment to us and the neighborhood. We have not been contacted by either the O'Conners or any part regarding this proposal. As the largest property abutter, which has the most significant impact on this plan, I'm confused by the statement in the request for a proposal which says that they have spoken to all the abutting neighbors, and they have made no effort at all to speak to us. The application states that this location is no longer well-suited for residential use. There is a high volume of noise and level of traffic. This home stands with other residential dwellings all around who share that same high volume and noise level. Are we all unsuitable for residential use? The proposed project will only increase the high volume and noise of traffic. With the roadway encircling the house, it will bring traffic and noise deeper into the neighborhood and right up against our property. All four corners of this location are zoned residential. Three are already being used as businesses. Why must we have the last remaining corner be a commercial business? People are doing renovations and additions all along Randolph Ave and Reedsdale Road, proving that this area is still desirable and suitable for residential use. I also agree with the traffic. It's a nightmare at rush hour. It can be backed up most nights to Gunn Hill and Badger Circle on Pleasant Street and to Milton Academy on Randolph Ave, taking over 20 to 30 minutes just to get through the lights. The proposal states that the observances will be held late in the afternoon and early evening, and this is the exact time of rush hour. It would make an already horrible traffic situation totally unbearable. I know they are considering a traffic study now, being in the middle of COVID. I would like to know when that would be done. Also, they are recommending a four-foot fence next to the roadway that surrounds the house. This is hardly private and does not shield the view from the parking lot or roadway they are proposing from my yard. How is this showing any consideration of the neighbors? We will constantly hear people, cars, delivery vehicles that need to pass by to exit their property or to line up for procession. How does this offer any protection from pollution of the vehicle's exhaust? There is no fence that will prevent any of this. The 10-foot lighting poles in the parking lot and roadway will light up my backyard until late in the evening, and the motion sensor lights will go off all night long. Also, there are two 12-foot by 39-foot leaching areas proposed, which will dump concentrated amounts of water into the ground flooding the adjacent basements. The number of variances being sought by this developer, along with the increased amount of traffic, noise, light, and groundwater, does not make this a suitable place for a business. I do not see any benefit to the neighborhood for this business and feel that the O'Conners are the only ones who will benefit from it. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Aileen Kenny.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, great. My name is Aileen Kenny. I live at 17 Lodge Street. I am going to read a petition out. We obtained 50 signatures from the community in support of this petition. Dan Daly referenced it earlier. I emailed a copy of this petition to Julia Getman prior to the hearing so that you have copies of all the signatures.
Thank you.
"We, the undersigned residents of Milton, requested the planning board reject the site plan approval application for the proposed O'Connor Funeral Home at 584 Randolph Avenue for the following reasons. Number one, inadequate parking. As proposed, the site plan application includes only 18 parking spots for guests and two for employees. This is totally inadequate for a funeral home. The application suggests that they will obtain an agreement for overflow parking with St. Elizabeth's Church. It would be irresponsible for the planning board to approve this application without a signed long-term agreement for overflow parking." Number two, insufficient setbacks. The applicant has requested a reduction of rear setback from 30 feet to 10 feet and the side setback for a commercial building from 19.2 feet to 17.2 feet. Both the rear and side property lines abut residential parcels. The request to minimize the rear setback by 66% is particularly aggressive and demonstrates that the .7-acre lot is simply not large enough to accommodate the proposed plan. Number three, traffic. The subject property is on a corner of one of the busiest intersections in Milton with the local streets routinely experiencing significant backups during the morning and evening commutes. The access road for the funeral home is in a location that will increase the existing traffic issues. Additionally, the location poses a risk to public safety due to the extremely limited line of sight for cars turning right onto Pleasant Street from Randolph Avenue. Section 12 of the site plan application does not adequately assess the impact of traffic associated with this proposed change from residential to commercial use. So again, we had 50 signatures on that, and so we emailed a copy to the planning board. I'd also like to request that the online site plan application be updated to include the architectural plans that were shown on the screen earlier this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And Allison, if you could make a note of that, adding the attachment B with the architectural renderings to the website, that would be great. Okay, the next speaker, Michael Kenny.
Can you hear him?
Yep.
My name is Michael Kenny. I reside at 17 Lodge Street, Milton. I'm a resident of Milton for the past nine years. Thank you for letting me speak, and again, thank you to the planning board for your time. I wanted to go on record as opposing this project for the aforementioned reasons of traffic. The size of the lot is too small with lacking of insufficient parking, as well as insufficient setbacks. So I'd like to say that despite being situated at a busy intersection with some commercial properties across the street, this lot is surrounded by five residential properties. properties across the street, this lot is surrounded by five residential properties. I want, I want the board to let this remain a residential property. The current owners bought this as a residential property and it should remain as such. In addition to that, I think that it'll, this project will provide light pollution. And thank you for your time and letting me talk.
Thank you very much. Okay. Don't see any more hands raised, but I would like to give people, oh, we have one more. Oh, a couple more. Okay. The next is Deborah McSorley.
Hi, I'm Deborah McSorley. I live at 580 Randolph Ave. I'm a part owner with my sister Martha who just spoke. Obviously, I'm opposed to this too, and I just want to start out by saying that, as my sister said, we were never informed of this by the O'Conners, as most of my neighbors didn't know about it before it was listed in the paper. So I don't understand why it was written that they spoke to us. As was said before, this whole intersection is zone residential C, so it's not a commercial neighborhood. And the church and the store were grandfathered in because they were, were there. And the nursing, the hospice is generally a home. It doesn't have a lot of traffic and, and it is housing people. So I guess that went through because of that. This funeral home is a business and it's a big money-making business, and it is only benefiting them. It's not benefiting anyone in the neighborhood. With the planned large driveway, the bright lights, the increased traffic, nothing in this proposal leads me to believe that this funeral home is appropriate for this residential neighborhood. And the, the plan will change the nature and appearance of our not, our non-commercial block forever. This side of the neighborhood is residential, and we want to keep it that way. The proposed driveway that they're calling it, in my view, is a road. And there's nothing blocking this road from my backyard on two sides. So the back of the house and the side of the house is my backyard. And there's a road, and there's no trees that they're planning on putting. They actually want to take the trees down that are there. So there's no separation between a busy road of constant traffic at night flowing by my backyard. The only privacy I get from Randolph Ave. There's, there'll be no privacy. There'll be lights. There's going to be 10-foot lights that LED lights are obnoxious, and they're saying they're having seven of them. So I don't see how that is residential at all. And there's going to be the car lights and the noise from the cars and the noise from the people that are going to be lining up. I'm very concerned about the fumes, the idling, when cars idle to get by. There's like all kinds of toxic fumes that come out that will be seeping into my backyard. My sister mentioned the water runoff. What's to guarantee that that 21,000 gallon capacity water tank that they're relocating the water to isn't going to end up in my basement or the basement to the adjacent houses? It probably will because there's no other place for it to go. The, the, in the proposal, it states that each room accommodates 50 people. Times two rooms, that's 100 people. A lot of wakes have more than 50 people. So where do the overflow of people go when they can't be in the building? They'll be migrating outside my backyard, and there's no fence. A four-foot fence is not really a fence. You can see right over, you can hop right over it to get to your car. There's no privacy there whatsoever. And I'll also be surrounded by, you know, all the other lights and noise pollution. Parking, as everybody mentioned, is a huge issue. Right now, with church parking on Sun, it's only on Sundays, and not so bad with COVID, but when COVID's gone, cars line up all down Reevesdale Road and in front of my house, in front of Cheryl's house, in front of my other neighbor's houses, and it slows down traffic because when they park in front of my house, the traffic has to slow down and funnel. And I think this is a potential emergency problem for emergency vehicles because now if these cars are parking in front of the church and in front of my house because there's no other place to park, traffic has to funnel into these two single roads. And if an emergency vehicle comes down, there's absolutely no place for people to pull over. So I think that's a huge potential hazard that no one has addressed in this, and I think that needs to be addressed. Not to mention the turnarounds. When people are coming in, out, and all around the parking lot of the funeral home, I see this already. They don't want to drive two miles down Randolph Ave to turn around. So they use my yard and my neighbor's yard to turn around. So, and that's usually only on Sundays or when there's heavy traffic at night. But now if this is going to be constant every night, how will I get in and out of my driveway when other people are using it? Because it's already happening. I, I think Cheryl might have mentioned this, but the, if they're going to be using the church parking lot, it's a very dangerous crossing. I've seen people get hit by cars. One of my friend's daughters got hit by a car at this corner. It's very dangerous as is. We don't need more cars coming through here. And then another thing is what, what is the capacity of the church parking lot? The church parking lot is currently renting space to Milton Hospital. They have their own events. They have CCD. They have weddings. They have mass. How can the funeral home, how can the church guarantee parking for Milton Hospital, all their services, and the funeral home when they can't even accommodate parking for themselves right now? On Sundays, when they have mass, when it's not COVID, that parking lot is overflowing. So I don't understand how they, they can say, if they're holding two funerals at a time, which they have the capacity to do, and each funeral can, right now only hold 50 people, but now most people come after work. So it's not four people to a car. It's usually one, maybe two people to a car. So now you have like 100 to 200 cars between 4:00 and 8:00 PM circling this area, turning around in our driveways, trying to get in and out of Reevesdale Road, and there's no place to park. So where will the overflow of cars be parked? And how is that safe for emergency vehicles and children? This, this whole thing is very emotional to me, and it's, it's overwhelming, and I just feel like my privacy is completely being invaded between the road that they're building next to my house, the lighting, the people. There's going to be people standing right outside my children's bedrooms, strangers, and we're talking like 200 strangers a night that can look over the fence into my, my children's rooms. It's, it makes me very, very uncomfortable. And then, and just as a side note, I'm not going to get into the whole traffic thing because everybody that lives in this neighborhood knows what a nightmare traffic is, and I don't think I need to reiterate that, but it is a safety concern. But as a side note, in my opinion, I see the placement of a funeral home diagonally across from a hospice to be a little bit insensitive. Residents of hospice and their family members should not have to endure this daily upsetting visual reminder of their or their loved ones' impending fate. As my family recently went through a hospice experience across the street with my own mother, I can guarantee you that these types of visuals can be very upsetting to people and families going through this sad emotional experience. So for them to have to sit there while they're dying, looking out at a funeral procession, I think it's just a wrong placement. And, and it's just, it makes, it's very upsetting for this neighborhood. So I, I sent you guys all these concerns and more that I'm not going to get into now. I sent you a list. I hope you read through it. I'm just not happy with this coming into the neighborhood, and I think it's a, it's not a good plan. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And I want everyone to know, if you did submit written comment, we do have them as part of the record. This is really our opening evening, so be assured that all of these documents will be reviewed and everybody will read them. But I do encourage you to continue to participate in our hearing as well as the zoning Board of Appeals, which is also very important. So we appreciate you coming. We want you to feel welcome to keep coming and know that we are reading all of your correspondence. The next person is Julie Thermador.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Julie Thermador, and I live at 546 Randolph Ave, and I'm a neighbor to many already who has already spoken. I am not going personally into all the different, the same different thing that everyone has gone through. What I find fascinating is, excuse me, that we've been talking about this, because I've lived in Milton 15-plus years with children in the neighborhood. And I remember when Lodge Street did not have to have a sign for people not to cut traffic. Because what happened is when people have too much traffic on Randolph Ave, they turn around and go back Gun Hill and then come through onto Lodge, where we as a community had to come up with a sign that says people cannot turn left onto Randolph Ave because it was a cut through. It's like a mini highway. And to think that that's even an option based on our town, it's also more upsetting because we've always been reserved in the point where certain businesses cannot come here. We couldn't have a Dunkin' Donuts by 7-Eleven. We couldn't have like that mini march over there before the Ossis come. And yet, we're going to tolerate or accept or even consider having a funeral home. And to refer to St. Elizabeth, somebody should be talking about what happened at Easter at St. Elizabeth. All that parking, extra parking is on Oss Street down Randolph Ave. It's on Lodge Street. It's on Whizdale Street. So there's no regular parking for St. Elizabeth. There's not enough parking. And the temple, we forgot about the Jewish temple. The temple uses it as well. So when there is some event for them to use, they also pack their car there and on Oss Street. And again, if I may go back to my neighbor's street on Lodge Street, the neighborhood has become what kids used to be a long time ago. Little kids, my kids are older. I'm on my way out. But the little kids are on the street playing literally every day, communing and talking to other friends, building relationship. Families are building relationship. And they've been in the, in their homes where they invest in our community to make sure that we have that community we always have. So accepting to have such a business would only deter a community that we've protected for so long, not just the Randolph Ave community and the Lodge community, Milton as a whole. Because Milton always have a community. Whether you form X, Y, and Z, you know it's a tight community where people know each other. Kids grow up together. People don't leave Milton. They move from one home to another. So I could echo and agree with Mr. Daly, Daly, Sibley, Martha, Aileen. I mean, there's so many people I can, and the poles, the lights, that is the most appalling thing I can ever hear. We're not having a stadium. It's a funeral home in a backyard of residences. And to support what Debbie says, I have small children. I would be worried because you don't know who's coming. And let's not forget, being on Whizdale and Randolph Ave, this is a mini highway that connects to 93. So people can just do anything very quickly and just get out of town. By the time they get caught, they're on the highway. So we need to protect our children. We need to protect our community, and we need to protect how we maintain our properties and our investment by stopping this business. There's another place down the street. It's been so, it's been open for a long time, that funeral home. Why don't they go by that? We need to remain residential. And that's my little two cents.
Thank you. Next person is Will Quinn.
Hi there. This is Stephanie Quinn. My husband Will Quinn is here. We live at 86 Reevesdale Road, which is the immediate abutter to the southeast corner of this property. We live here with our two-and-a-half-year-old son, Declan, and we just wanted to thank the board for hosting this meeting. It's been really informative, and also for the applicant for describing all of these plans. As you can imagine, we're very invested in understanding the plans for this property and, and what is happening going forward. So I wanted to mention, just for the record, that we are on the call and, you know, very interested in watching this process unfold. I'll just lend a few comments to what has been addressed previously, but just really wanting to focus on some of the areas that, April, you mentioned, the planning board is really focused on in their assessment of this. So one is the lighting. I think it's been brought up before, but there are a number of tall poles of lighting surrounding the entire property, which is really one of the things that we'll, we'll definitely address all of, or impact all of the abutters, one of them being immediately to the back of our yard and shining into the lights of our bedrooms. So just wanted to bring that up because I know that that is one area of assessment and just thinking about what would be maybe a more appropriate plan if this is approved to move forward. The other one, I know you've mentioned that there's a stormwater plan that's only just today been provided. That is something that we're also very invested in understanding, similar to some of the abutters, because this property is on a higher ground than everyone else around it. That's something that we really feel is important to understand and make sure that that's not something that would impact our properties. So just wanted to bring those couple things up. Obviously, we're invested in, in what happens with this property and, you know, the traffic that surrounds it, you know, and just being able to get in and out and make sure that the appropriate signage is on the road. I think that's an issue currently, but I know that that's probably not something that this board is looking into. But we just wanted to lend our voice in this process. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Just to clarify, this, the applicant did submit a stormwater report to us previously. The, the report that was submitted today is our peer review. So for those who aren't familiar with this process, stormwater is a pretty complex evaluation, and traditionally, the town, for a larger project like this with a lot of abutter concerns and potential runoff, we hire our own consultant at the expense of the applicant to review the applicant's consultant's report and to advise us on whether or not it's sufficient just as a second means of, you know, checks and balances. Our engineering department reviews that as well. So because that peer review report was only submitted today, we still have quite a bit of a review to do, both in the planning department and in the engineering department, before we're able to say whether or not we're comfortable with what the applicant had submitted. So I see there's one more hand raised. Jane Driscoll.
Hello, my name is Jane Driscoll. I'm a lifelong Milton resident. I'm at 399 Reevesdale Road, which is diagonally across. I've been in this home since 1969. My father's family at 403 and 405 Reevesdale Road, lived in this area since the early 1900s. All that I'm hearing, I agree with. The traffic has always been an issue. When I was a little girl, we've always, we've had, we used to have a pharmacy at the corner and also Kohans and then Curtis Farms and Tedeschi's, and now with 7-Eleven. We actually had a gas station there too at one point. But traffic has never been, I mean, right now, we have the dentist. They're not even open every day. They're not open in the evening. So actually, you don't even know the dentals, the dentist office is there most of the time. Also, I think the traffic in the morning, just trying to get out of my house sometimes, going towards, across the street. So just in the morning when kids are going to school, all the buses and things, and if you're having funerals, sometimes families have to get there as early as 8 o'clock. So the morning is also an issue too, from what I'm hearing about traffic. Again, sometimes the buses and things try to get out, go to the high school, Glover School, just trying to get out of my driveway can be an issue. And that's not with the funeral going on too. And I know with the funeral homes, when things go back to normal, there are a lot of people. And I think Mr. O'Connor is a fairly popular funeral director. So traffic is an issue. It's, it's an issue now without even anything there. There's more big trucks coming through, buses, people coming through Pleasant Street, Montreid Still Road in the morning, trying to miss the corner light early in the morning. Nobody stops at the stop sign. Where Quarry Lane is, we missed a daily call from. That's very dangerous. Again, it's, it's bad right now. So if you put a funeral home in there with more people and more cars, I just don't, it, I can just predict. more, more terrible, terrible circumstances for the neighborhood, for the neighbors. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. We have a couple more. Haley Dutton.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Awesome. I just want to start by saying thank you to all of you to be able to hear our voices tonight. My name is Haley Dutton. I'm a resident of 40 Lodge Street. I've lived here for 21 years now. And I just wanted to get on tonight just to echo, you know, the voices that have been opposed to this going in. One thing that I really think of when this has been presented is just that the traffic that is going to be coming from this and just that this is zoned as residential and not as commercial. And just that the safety is such a big component. And not necessarily from people attending the funeral itself, but just the daily overflow of people using Lodge Street as a cut through. You know, if the light is backed up, people are already coming down this street going so fast. And I think of the 30-plus kids that live on this street. And that's not an exaggeration. So I just think of them and just the overflow of traffic when people see that it's backed up and they use Lodge Street as a cut through to then take a left onto Randolph Ave. And just that it's already so bad now to just think of, you know, the future if this happens to go in, what that could lead to for the traffic and the safety of the people of Lodge Street. And I guess that also runs into different aspects of the intersection itself. If the, if the lights will be elongated to let more traffic go through and different things like that. So I just wanted to just be put on the record that I am opposed to this going in.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Alejandra Zeladon.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
I am a resident at 578 Randolph. And yes, again, as Haley just said, it's echoing what the neighbors are saying here. I'm extraordinarily concerned about this project, especially when it comes to the children in the neighborhood. In the past 11 years that I have lived here, we have had changes. For example, Lodge Street, and she just mentioned Lodge Street. And it's often, you know, we've had the restriction of passage onto Lodge Street to try and control some of that traffic because that's traffic was backing up on their street, sometimes still, standing still, coming onto Randolph Ave from Pleasant Street. And there are kids that are very, very young children of those families of my neighbors that are in danger with something like this. And I know very well that the overflow of traffic that's going to happen if people, especially are parking at St. Elizabeth's, we are going to have parked cars, even if it's restricted, on Lodge Street. And we're going to have that on Artwell Street. And there's going to be everywhere. It's going to be everywhere. And it's very concerning when we have families that directly abut the project, like the Quins. And they have a two and a half year old child. And this is extraordinarily concerning. And as far as Deborah McSorley, my neighbor directly, four foot fence, she's absolutely right about this. And there are young people that are living there too. And regardless, it's absolutely not suitable to our neighborhood. The Seasons is a home and it is not a high-traffic situation. People are visiting their family members there in the last stage of life. And this is just not the appropriate place between the traffic and the concern for safety for the children in the neighborhood. Next to me at 576, the Tran family, they have very, very young children as well. The kids are trying to have one or two streets where they can, you know, play, ride their bicycles. This is a disaster of something that I don't even want to imagine how serious this could be. My neighbor Julie, she just mentioned her kids are a little older. But when we were here at first 11 years ago, they were babies as well. And they would, you know, we've seen the neighborhood already change with this type of traffic situation here. And this is just going to be something that is going to be the perfect storm. It's absolutely true. As you can see, the entire neighborhood and all of the area here is opposed for the simple reason that nobody, this is detrimental to all of the neighbors that are here, to all of the people that are trying to live here. And we already have enough fumes. We have enough other concerns. There's also concern with the lighting. I mean, the Quinn family and the McSorley family are directly impacted by this. And I personally work with architects myself for an architectural product firm company. And I understand how that works. And LED lighting is really bright. It's really bright. Regardless of how we're pointing it downward, there is a flood effect. There, it really, really is not appropriate for a neighborhood. This is a residential neighborhood and it has to remain as such. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. And we have Bill Maharris.
I'm mute. Hi, is everyone able to hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Bill Maharris. I grew up actually on Highland Street. And so I now live on Readstale. So basically a lifelong neighbor to the area. For starters, just, I think there's been a lot of unfair assumptions that have been made in the last half hour to an hour, just with general assumptions like how people will cross the street and where traffic will overflow to. That's, those are all items that are to be, remain to be unknown at this point. And also just knowing the O'Connor family and owning this property and knowing that they'll be very willing to work with, with everybody in the surrounding area opposed to if they're forced to say sell off and another project were to come to. And not knowing that what, what person would come to, to start a project in this area and not have a compassion for the neighborhood and not say, oh, we'll work with you on the lighting or if the fence needs to be higher. So just certain things like knowing that a family that would like to run this business that is from the neighborhood and very caring and compassionate to the community. So I just want to note that everybody should just sort of just be a little more open-minded and hope that they could work with the O'Connor family and have faith that they'll do something very positive for the neighborhood. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we have another hand raised, but I'm having a hard time finding it. Oh, here we go. Dan Shay. Dan Shay, you just have to unmute yourself. There you go. Dan Shay? Looks like you are unmuted. You may have a challenge with your audio. We also have one call in listener. And if you wish to raise your hand as of someone phoning in, you dial star nine. So if the person on the phone wishes to be recognized, please dial star nine and we'll recognize you. Dan Shay is unmuted, but I cannot hear him. Dan, I've lowered your hand. If you wish to speak, just raise it again and we'll try to work this out. Okay. So if he wishes to speak, I don't know. You're unmuted on my side. Mr. Shay, can you try to speak again? I'm afraid you might be having challenges with your audio. We have one more speaker I'm going to jump to and then we'll come back to you, Dan Shay. CM. Could you please say your name and address?
Yeah, hi, my name is Chris Murphy and I'm at 10 Maitland Street. And just wanted to follow up on the last comment. I echo all the concerns. I have three young children who spend a lot of time playing on Lodge Street. Certainly, traffic is a huge concern. But I also just want to say that while I'm sure the O'Connor family is delightful, I would rather my neighborhood not be at the mercy of their kindness. You know, I think it's a job of the planning board to really listen to the residents of the neighborhood and listen to their concerns and make that their primary focus. We've all invested a lot to live here and it's really important to us. And so while I'm sure the O'Conners will be as good a neighbors as they could be, their job is to run a thriving business and make money, and that will be their first priority. And the livability of our neighborhood is our first priority. And there's a natural conflict there. And it's the role of the planning board to make sure that our voices are heard and our concerns are addressed. So I appreciate the time, but I just want to say that while we have a lot of concerns and I'm sure the O'Conners are fine people, we are at cross purposes on this. So I just urge the planning board to take our concerns very seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I appreciate you taking the time to call in. And again, I just want to reiterate, I know I've said this several times, but this is really the beginning of what I expect will be probably a quite lengthy process. So while we're very happy to hear from folks tonight, we encourage you to please continue to participate in our hearings or in other ways if you wish to submit written testimony at any time. We would welcome that. And I do encourage you also to participate in the zoning board of appeals hearing when that comes open, because they will be making a lot of determinations that will really guide whether or not our site plan approval is required. I'm going to return to Dan Shay and unmute you and see if this can work. You should be unmuted. You may need to unmute yourself as well. Mr. Shay, I think I'm going to attempt to, oh, can you try it now? You're unmuted. I'm going to promote you to a panelist and see if that does anything to help us. You should be able to speak if you wish.
Oh, we have someone. Is that Mr. Shay?
No. And I do apologize for this technical challenge. It's, as we said earlier, not a perfect format. But we are trying to make it work. So I do not.
Is it me, April?
Yes.
Can you try unmuting him again? Because he seems to be muted. I don't know if that's when you promoted him. Did you unmute him too?
Yeah, yeah, we can try it again. Now you're definitely unmuted, Mr. Shay. Yeah, I think that you may be having a challenge with audio on his side. We can give this just another minute and see if you can work that out. But I think we should.
We just recommend that he send something like an email or some note?
Certainly. Yes, certainly. I think we can leave him as a panelist in case he can work out the audio in the next couple of minutes. And if you can, please interrupt us. You are unmuted. But you also have the option of submitting to our planning department or to each of us as members of the board. All of our email addresses are on the town website. You can submit written comments. You're certainly welcome back at our next hearing to speak again and definitely appear before the ZBA as well. So we've heard from the applicant. We've heard from the neighborhood. And I think the neighborhood had some very thoughtful, respectful comments. And I appreciate everyone for your participation. What I think we should do now is go to the board and take some questions from the board. I mean, we have quite a bit of materials that we still need to undertake before we can really get into any substantial deliberations. But there may be questions here that we can get on the table for the applicant to work towards before they come back to us again. So I don't know if anyone wants to volunteer to go first.
I can go.
Go ahead, Danny.
Sure. So April, you had mentioned the areas. If we could just go over that list again really quickly. I had protection of adjoining properties, sewage waste, water, space adequacy for delivery, lighting, health, safety, welfare for adjacent properties and community. Am I forgetting anything?
Unit density and proximity of adjacent buildings. And enhanced safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjoining sites. And just to remind the public who may not have heard that earlier, this is the list of items that the planning board has jurisdiction over in our decision-making process.
All right. All right. So I was sort of taking notes as all these incredibly articulate and thoughtful citizens. I can't recall such an informative group of people. So thank you so much for coming out and telling us about your neighborhood. I am familiar with it. I've walked down in that area. I've driven down in that area. But you did bring a lot of insight to the table and I greatly appreciate that. So thank you for coming out tonight. I focused on a safety matter on and off the site. I did think that that woman's point about the audio alerts or tactical surfaces at the lights was a significant point. The inadequate parking. I don't know of a plan for overflow parking. I thought it was an excellent question. Is there a long-term lease with St. Elizabeth available? That's something I'd like to learn from the applicant. I do think that it, I don't know how it would be safe to cross the street from St. Elizabeth. So a street crossing plan would be helpful. I'm interested in going on a sidewalk to try to better understand that. And a plan to tell overflow parking, you know, how they're going to get directed to go where, how that information is conveyed to the drivers as they're sort of, you know, moving around this area quickly. In my experience, the speeds of that roadway are quite fast. And I am concerned for its pedestrian safety. So, and I did think that the woman's point, the long-term residence point about potential for emergency vehicle, you know, when an emergency vehicle approaches this area, if there's no place for the drivers to pull to the side, that could be a very large concern. So that's what I had for safety matter on and off the site. And I haven't really had a chance to study the site itself and those plans. I would like to look at closer. And then under the next category, I had protection and welfare for adjacent properties. I am concerned that there is no buffer between the property and the abutters. Car lights, fumes, sounds from cars. When you take the trees out, you're taking any buffer, especially for, I think it's 580. I have their names down. Deborah, Deborah McSorley and her sister, that property along the top. was a, I really could feel for all of them, but especially that property, which is a significant butter, being faced with that. But it would affect all, I would say five or six out of seven of the butters. The park, that spill of parking, of the lighting from the parking light poles, that plan is not acceptable. I'm especially concerned about number 38, number 386 Reed's Dale. To have lighting cover three quarters of their house is just not, that's just not acceptable. Let me think. And I think that the insufficient setbacks do demonstrate that the plan is too big for the site, but I can't really get into that. But I can say that it's obvious when you see that much light pollution that that resident that brought that issue up is making a point. But I'll focus on the light pollution. Because as I'm understanding our guidelines, we don't get into the footprint, April. We don't get into the size, so I can't go there. But I can say that the light pollution is an issue. I just don't, I think that that's just not sensitive to the welfare of the residential neighbors who live there. The light issue, the buffer issue, the car lights, fumes. I mean, when those cars at nine o'clock, 9:30 at night have to spin through, they're going to affect all the neighbors around. So that's all. Those are the categories I focused on.
Thank you, Denny. Rich?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, just briefly, I mean, I know I'm going to have more questions as we move forward. And I don't want to repeat anything that Denny just said, but I'll just, I'll echo those, you know, things I'm focusing or like staring at right now on the screen are those lines and those budding houses and, you know, how close the folks we're parking to those lot lines and what the buffer looks like. The other thing, I haven't read through the whole lighting plan yet, but if you recall when we were looking at Bence, I kind of was harping on the lighting really fitting into the neighborhood, especially when you're wedging in between houses. I mean, as they were, as I think Allison was kind of flipping through the lighting, I was seeing a lot of industrial light, lighting in there. And so again, no real questions or comments or suggestions right now. But I think those are the things that I'm going to be looking at. That's all I have for today.
Thank you, Rich.
Thanks.
Kathleen or Cheryl, do you have comments or questions you want to add?
Um, not necessarily. I mean, I'm sort of kind of waiting to see what the ZBA does with it. Because, you know, quite logically, we're not really doing anything until they can. So I sort of figured, well, I'd let them deal with that, you know, deal with the actual request before I got really into the weeds on it. I am concerned about, obviously, I've been through that intersection a bazillion times myself. You know, it's terrible, absolutely terrible. But it's terrible now. Don't, you know, it's already awful. And, you know, I mean, I think the idea of saying that, you know, there's overflow parking and insisting that they have some sort of an agreement already is totally premature to have an agreement with St. Elizabeth. So that would be something, that would be a condition that the ZBA could impose, but not, you know, not us. And it's way too early for that. I'm happy that they're saving the, some part of the house because it's a lovely old building and a beautiful stone foundation. And I'd sort of like to encourage more preservation of the existing building than they might have originally planned. But that's it.
Thank you. And Cheryl, we mentioned earlier that you had a professional obligation this evening. So you were dialing in late, but we're happy to see you here.
Thank you. I will watch the tape of the part that I missed. But I did review the documents that were submitted. And so I do have a few questions and comments that may have been already addressed, so bear with me. My initial reaction was, wow, they're doing a lot to this site. And because I see so much asphalt and I see circulation that's driving all the asphalt. And it just seems to me that maybe there's a better way to lay out that site. You have a 10-foot topographic change. And I, as an architect, when I see a 10-foot topographic change, I think, aha, I can get some parking in underneath that because of that topographic change within that 10 feet. Maybe I can park underneath the building. And so I wonder why they haven't considered that. I realize they're keeping the historic part, but it's a small part that they're keeping. There's a much larger portion of it is the addition. And the reason I ask about those things, not only is it the asphalt, but it's the regrading. And I know I sound like a broken record now with regrading, but it's significant because it changes the appearance. You have a, now you're going to have a roadway which is basically fronted with a driveway. So while you're saving a historic house, you're totally destroying the setting that it currently has in terms of having a front lawn and having an approach to the intersection. So I would really like them to consider that if there's any alternative to the way they've laid this out. And then I'd like to see, like I've requested on other projects, some site sections. So if you were to draw a line from the left to the right of the screen right now, cut a section through there, show us the existing topography and show us the proposed topography. Show us the walls, the fencing, the heights of the trees and the height of the landscape material. I'd like to see the same kind of section cut top to bottom. But, and then one cut through the driveway up towards the parking lot. And I think it helps us understand what's being proposed. If you look at this plan in terms of people who are not familiar with looking at a plan like this, people who might be watching, there's a dark line with a number in a rectangle. And that, those dark lines are proposed new grades. And so when you see a bunch of these dark lines, what you realize is that you're getting a lot of topographic movement. You're moving the earth a lot here to make this plan work. So that's sort of big picture to me. I think what it looks like from visually, three dimensionally would be important. So some kind of street level view, looking up at what this proposal is from both Reed's Dale and Randolph Ave would help quite a bit. So on the more nitty-gritty, I looked at the lighting layout, the proposed lighting layout and the light fixtures. I agree with Rich. The type of fixture is commercial and design. It really is not fitting for this kind of residential location, particularly when they're located on the property lines next to his existing residences. And also it should be looked at relative to what kind of lighting already exists at the street. I saw that there were three light poles proposed along the street, but it doesn't show us what street lighting already exists. And so there could very well be way too much, or maybe even sort of conflicting kinds of lighting, depending upon what kind of lamps are in the existing street lighting. If you have different kinds of lights, it can be not very pleasing. I didn't see an area for snow storage or how they were going to deal with snow. There's no place to put snow that's plowed here. And what would be the snow management plan? And then also trees. Trees are called out as a caliper of one and a half inches. That's rather small. And I'd like to see cut sheets of this, of these landscape materials so we can understand their scale. That's it for now.
Okay, thank you. So my feedback is I'm really concerned about the light spill off into the budding properties. I am sort of reserving my rights on feedback relative to traffic until we have a study done. And hopefully that study will look at mitigation. Route 28 is a state-owned roadway, so I don't know what type of interaction that will have to pass on. I also really want to see what the department say about the stormwater peer review and have a chance to digest that. I would like to know a little bit more about what type of a butter outreach has happened to date and what is planned moving forward, because we did hear a couple of comments about that. And I also am hopeful that Marion can fill us in on the plan for the ZBA and whether or not a hearing has been scheduled as of this date or when that will happen. And I know they have a very high volume of things on their docket with all the 40Bs coming forward and a lot of hearings scheduled, so hopefully you can fill us in on that. I see Denny has her hand raised.
Oh, sorry. Hi, thank you. I thought of a couple more things, but I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. I mean, I have shared a lot of the concerns that were already raised, so I don't want to really reiterate all that much. Just checking my notes here. I do think, Denny requested a sidewalk. I do think that is in order. However, I wonder if we should wait until we have some consideration by the ZBA? Because if they don't grant the use variance, it's sort of moot. But we can discuss that as a board. So Denny, did you have more things you want to add? And then we can ask, we can invite the applicant to respond to some of these things.
Oh, sure. I just thought of a few things as you all were talking. Was it the applicant that brought up the St. Elizabeth parking availability? I thought it was the applicant.
It's mentioned in the application.
Okay, so I, thank you. Thank you for helping me recall it. So I'm not suggesting that they enter a lease now, Kathleen. I'm just wondering if St. Elizabeth is on board in a real way for what they're putting in the application. That's all. I'm not suggesting that they enter a lease. I agree with you. That would be a silly idea. But I do, I do, we've had applicants come in and say, oh, we can park there, we can park here, we can park. Well, I think it's, I think it is good to know if the other party is ready, is willing or interested in making that kind of a commitment. That's all. I just wanted to put that out there for the applicant. I personally would feel better if there was something that demonstrated that. I also, we haven't really talked much about waste. How and how they would take care of their snow removal and/or waste removal. And then my other question, and this is probably something that Cheryl would hit on, is there's so much impervious parking area. You know, the lot coverage combined with removing so many trees, that does have a negative impact on the welfare of the citizens in this area. It just, there's so many ecosystem reasons that that's not a win for the community. So I put that under the category of protection and welfare for adjacent properties. So I just wanted to add that to the public record.
What I think we should do is unmute Marion. Let's see if we can find her and she can tell us who can respond to some of these things and maybe set forward the plan. Marion, are you unmuted?
How about now?
Yes, perfect.
Well, first of all, I want to say that I've taken a lot of notes tonight. And I'm not going to try to respond to everything, particularly because so many of the comments do relate to traffic, circulation and parking. There are a few things that I might want to just correct because I think they might have been inaccurate. First of all, just starting out with the ZBA question, no, I have not been given any date yet for the ZBA meeting and they are very busy. So I will continue to see when they are going to be able to schedule this and keep you informed. But I would anticipate that it may take a while. So I really don't know when that hearing is going to happen. But I'm in touch with them and I'll let you know and everybody else, of course. Just briefly touching on the question of St. Elizabeth, I believe what we said in our application was that we have discussed the possibility of reciprocal parking arrangements with St. Elizabeth. I do know that the applicant have sat down several times with the pastor. We do not have an agreement. We do not know exactly what the arrangement would be if it happens. There were questions asked that are legitimate questions as to, well, if you had parking there, then how do people get across the street safely? Does that create yet another problem and so on and so forth? So we didn't say that we had an agreement. We don't have an agreement yet. We have discussed it. It has, we have sat down several times to talk about it. I'm just going to go backwards through my notes. I understand what Cheryl, well, I'm hoping the engineers understand what Cheryl is asking for. I don't know anything about the feasibility of underground parking on the, with the new structure. I do know that a great deal of what's happening with this site plan is predicated on the fact that we're trying to keep the house, that part of the structure. And I hear what everybody, what you're saying, that, you know, yes, you're keeping the house, but you're creating this turnaround driveway that changes the site. There is a landscaping plan. Maybe there's more work that can be done there. Maybe, I don't know whether there's a different way to circulate traffic. I do know that, you know, there are some challenges to the site. One thing about a circular driveway is that it allows more cars to park temporarily while you're, while people are leaving and coming for, after a funeral and that kind of thing. So that is an advantage in one sense, but a disadvantage in the sense that there's a lot more driveway. I think it's something we're just going to have to talk about some more. Yes, I agree that the streetlights should be looked at more carefully because there's already a great deal of lighting at this intersection. I'm sure that we can go back and discuss the lighting design and see if there is a more residential or lower-down method of lighting that would work here that's feasible. I'm not sure, I think, I don't know if the engineer wants to talk about it tonight, but, you know, there is, we have a lighting chart. I wasn't aware that there was lighting overspill supposedly on the chart. But even when a chart doesn't show lighting overspill, I think the question is ambient lighting. It's what kind of glow will come back from the site? Is there too much, you know, so much lighting on the site that it will still be intrusive? So it's certainly something that we can take, we can study some more and see if there is a way to address these concerns. Let's see, I'm just going back looking through all my notes, so. Let's see. Closeness of parking to the lot lines, yes, that is a, it's only, the only place where parking needs a variance in terms of setback, and it's not the building that requires a setback here. It's the five spaces at the rear. Those are, those will have to be closer than the normal setback for a building, which is 30 feet. And here, they're only, it's only a 10-foot setback. We were hoping that the fact that it was closer could be addressed by the style and dimensions of fencing and the type of landscaping that could be put in the rear. Again, that's a question that we need to continue to discuss, especially with the neighbors who live right on that side. On the side, it's a two-foot. This type of building has to be set back further from the side than a residential building. And the variance here would be two feet. It should be 19. It is 17. It's not nothing, but it also isn't a large variance from the required distance. But there were other problems on that side, having to do with screening and fencing and privacy that we would need to, we definitely need to discuss with that neighbor to see if there's a solution. Let me see. I do think that many of the other comments, which I certainly listened to carefully, and I know the applicants did, they relate to the traffic and the parking and the busyness of this intersection. And we, you know, we are getting, going to be working with the traffic engineer. We'll see what kind of progress we can make with that and we'll be reporting back to the planning board. And I suspect you're going to be hearing back something about that before you're going to be, there's going to be a hearing even before the Board of Appeals. So I just expect there's going to be a good, you need to allow, I know you're going to continue this hearing. You need to allow plenty of time for your continuance date and you might even have to continue it again. So I'd anticipate that. There was a mention by one neighbor that the projected capacity of the funeral home was 50 in each room. That's not what we said in our application. The projected capacity is 50 in both rooms, both viewing rooms or both chapels. I understand all the concerns. I know how funeral homes work. Traffic moves in and out. Some funerals are big, some, many are not that large. So I heard the comments and I think we're all hearing them about how do you accommodate parking, especially, and traffic, especially during these high-traffic times. As far as uh, you know, stormwater and whether something's likely to flood out onto a neighbor's lot, that is what the stormwater plan is for. Um, they've done a very detailed plan. It is being peer reviewed. There are comments that need to be addressed. But when that is done, then we would be able to report back um that 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 would not, that is not predicted to happen, that the stormwater plan, and there is no stormwater um design on this site right now. But with this um, these changes, there would be receptacles and there would be a design. It's still being worked on, so we need to report back on that. We don't have any final answer to that question. So I guess, you know, that's as much as, maybe there's something else I should be trying to respond to right now. I think that's as much as I feel. I can, I have so many notes and I really need to carefully review everything. I think Andrew O'Connor is on this call. Um, he's one of the applicants. And he he is not going to speak at length either, but I think he wanted to at least say something. So when you have time at the end, if you would let him speak, that would be helpful.
I'm sure. I just, um, I should be
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I just want to, um, first of all, thank everyone um who called in with concerns tonight. Um, I want everyone to know that I take them um extremely seriously. Um, I have had numerous um conversations um at length with some of the direct to butters, um, and then left letters with others, um, with all of my contact information. Um, I just want you to know that um through this whole thing, I want to be as transparent as possible um and that you can reach me at any point, night or day, um with any concerns. Um, our number one goal, um, you know, is to be um to to be a good neighbor and to have a positive impact on a community. Um, we've been at our current location um since 1959. Um, and we've fit in quite well with the neighborhood. Um, you know, I I don't think, I don't think you you last as long as we have with, you know, by making enemies, and I certainly don't want to do that. So I would encourage um everyone who spoke tonight and and people who didn't get a chance to speak tonight to reach out to me directly. Um, I'd be happy to sit down in person over the phone um or through email. I'd also like everyone to know um that I'm also a lifelong resident of Milton. I lived right at the bottom of Buckingham um for years and then up on Highland Street. Um, and now I live um on Stan Road. Um, so, you know, really, really getting along um and being a good member of the community i- is important to me. Um, and obviously, first and foremost, every everyone's safety um and everyone's well-being for, you know, their families and for their property. So um, I guess I just want to leave with you with, uh, I encourage you to to reach out to me um with anything that may come up and with any concerns that you do have or any questions about, you know, how the funeral, you know, sort of flow works. Um, and I think I can better handle that, but I look forward to hearing from people. Um, and again, I just want to thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so there have been a couple of comments, one relating to um discussions with the butters, and I I hear what Mr. O'Connor said, and um I think the neighborhood might benefit if we could facilitate a public meeting, a neighborhood meeting. Maybe Alison Quinn could work with Marian um to set up a neighborhood meeting, just to make sure everybody is on the same page. I know there's a lot of questions about privacy and fence heights and um lighting and and things that neighbors would generally be concerned about. And so giving people another forum to do that, I think, would would be wise. And our planning department can facilitate that um with Marian to make sure all the right people are contacted. Um, I think you should continue your work, undergo the traffic study and report back to us when you have something to share on that. Um, we in this town staff will review the peer review um report on the stormwater. Um, and I think what we need to do then is just continue this hearing to a date certain, and Mary, and I take your point that you have a lot to do. Um, so we shouldn't schedule it immediately. I'm wondering if you can recommend, do you want us to schedule for our second January meeting, our first February meeting?
Say not sooner than the middle of January and later might be okay. I I just, given the time of year, I I I am sure that the Board of Appeals can't schedule anything for December. They may be able to find a date in January, but I have no expect, I don't know right now. So if you for your second January meeting, you all may expect that that will have to be continued. But you could put it on the calendar just so that you have it there and um we'd have to, you know, you'd have to do that at a public meeting so everyone knows and that everyone will need to watch for that possible postponement again in January. But that's fine. If you want to do it for your second January meeting,
Okay.
we'll work with that.
That would be January 28th.
Yes, oh, January 28th. Okay.
Yes.
All right. So it's almost the end of January.
Correct. I I mean, I would suggest we do that, um, continue the 28th as a placeholder. Um, so that if you do have a traffic study complete or you do, for some reason, you get some progress with the ZBA, you have the opportunity to have the discussion with us in a public hearing. If we need to, we can continue it again.
It's fine with us. Thank you.
Does that make sense to the board members?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And I just want to note that um Rich Beeler is one of our members who is under the weather and was with us earlier and has had to drop off, so he will be up here for this vote. But um, what I think we should do then is I don't know that we need to vote on the continuance, but better safe than sorry. Let's just do a roll call vote to continue the public hearing on 584 Randolph Ave till 7:05 PM on January 28th.
Almost.
Second?
I will, I'll say, I think Cheryl moved and I second.
If not, then we'll do a roll call vote. Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Cheryl Taguayis?
Yes.
Jenny Svenson?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. Okay. And thank you very much for everybody who dialed, who shared thoughtful comments um and to the applicant for taking those in and agreeing to study them moving forward, and we look forward to talking with you all again. And to Mr. Shea, I'm very sorry we weren't able to hear from you tonight, but please don't hesitate to send us written comments. Um, and you can even call the planning department staff if you want to have a conversation with them about it. Okay, thank you. Um, the next item on our agenda is 2021 zoning articles. Cheryl, for your benefit, we we have already done 245 Highland Ave with the comments that you provided earlier. Um, 2020 zoning articles, we talked earlier that we weren't really going to get into a substantive discussion because we don't have additional information from our last meeting. We're going to work on revising the GIS map. Um, and we need to hear from the public. What I, the, there was discussion on this board. We actually voted to move these, that article to a February town meeting. Regrettably, we don't know the date of a February town meeting yet. Um, and it's a little um late, but the the board of the select board has not yet determined when that town meeting will be. And they are making a decision, I understand, at their meeting on December 16, which would be next week. So we had the oppor, I had the opportunity to go before the warrant committee since our last meeting to present on our articles. I did not do that. Um, I didn't know that we were really in the place to be moving forward with the public presentation because there were still a couple of things on zoning um for condo conversion that we were, I think, discussing with the map and the new information that was becoming available. So we may still have an opportunity to get on a February town meeting if there is one, um, but it will be a very condensed process. My preference, I think, would be to plan for a Maytown meeting, to bring these articles to a Maytown meeting, but have a public hearing on them at our next planning board meeting, which is second week of January. Um, and the reason it would be January 14th. The reason why I'm thinking that is because I would really like to hear from the public, particularly some of the folks who have come out with concerns about condo conversion and continue to talk about the map, the GIS map, and whether or not we want to make any adjustments to limit you know, what the bylaw would apply to, or, you know, have another conversation about whether or not we think it's accurate as it, it's solid as it is. And then we can kind of firm this up before we bring it to the warrant committee so that whatever is in the printed warrant will ultimately be our recommendation, hopefully, that we wish to proceed with rather than a green sheet. But you all should tell me what you think.
Well, the person who's written this stupid thing, um, I'd, I would like to say that I think it needs a full discussion, more of a discussion. I don't want to rush, you know, just to rush. Although I would point out that, you know, we did get so many people telling us at a previous planning board meeting that we weren't doing anything to provide more housing in the town, and we weren't doing anything to protect against 40B applications, you know, which seem to be coming out of the woodwork. And so I know that people somehow think everybody in town is going to suddenly turn their house into a condo, and it's going to be like all hell breaking loose. I don't think that's the case. And I think it's important for us to go forward on this article to at least make some step towards providing some more housing choice in this town. I think it's a really important um issue. And I'd like to be able to make sure that we have the time to talk about it in with the public and to go over it. And so I'm fully in supportive of postponing it until, you know, our hearing in January, our meeting in January.
I would just like, um, I I basically agree with Kathleen. I I would like to raise just a concern about doing it in the annual town reading just because of how much budget articles, how much time budget articles take and how it's a little more difficult with Zoom, you know, to go through and what I I've, I hear might be a difficult financial year. So I just worry that it's going to be taxing, you know, to get that done at the same time. Um, so if we, whether it's February or whether we can talk with the select board about something that's a separate meeting, like you know how they split the meetings in June and July? So that there could be dedicated for budget at one time and zoning another time?
Mm-hmm.
And I think if we could, I'm really concerned about the timing with the public hearings moving forward in January and probably concluding by May. If we have an opportunity to have a zoning alternative um in place, that might help with, I'm assuming that the Board of Appeal is going to, you know, um, whatever the decisions they make may be appealed by the applicants. And when we get to the Housing Appeals Committee and they look at what Milton's doing, um, you know, the, I know after having been a witness on the Randolph Ave one and I've read that decision, Kathleen, you probably have too, where every one of my comments was discredited and they took engineers' comments for planning and said that 88 Worf was indicative of our density in town in this town, when that's an anomaly, I think, and it's this very unique situation in terms of its location. So I I just think, um, having set, read that decision and having gone through that process, I think the more we can give mass housing, the better off we're going to be in terms of that appeal, those appeals. And so that's what concerns me is about timing. That I absolutely agree that we need public process on it, but I would like for us not to lose any steam on this. I I I recognize the difficulty with between now and the holidays. But if there's a chance that this is going to, that there will be a town meeting, I'd like us to consider whether we would hold a meeting earlier in January than the 14th for the purposes of the zoning articles.
What do you think, Jenny?
Well, I'm I'm fine for all the reasons that have been mentioned by the three of you. Um, I think, um, you know, um, the the more time we can put into it, I think it will get better. I think that that I think that we really have put our heads together and I feel like we are making improvements, so might as well keep going and making improvements. As opposed to just, anyway, but I'm getting tired.
Okay, so I guess the question before us then is, um,
April, just, I'm sorry, may I add one more thing?
Sure.
Um, uh, I took a look at a a project in Dedham that was built under, it's not the exact same kind of zoning, but somewhat similar zoning where uh, they have an overlay or kind of an overlay where if um a lot could have normally, let's say, maybe it would allow for five lots on in this particular site, a subdivision of five, they have an alternative which could be um a condominium development, which would allow for 1.5 um times the underlying. So this project that was built is a seven-unit building that looks like a large shingle-style house in a neighborhood that has old historic homes. And I think it's an interesting um kind of example if we want to try and think about examples and we, when we're considering the kinds of things. This happens to be new construction, so it's not perfectly applicable, but I do think it's kind of puts a face to the kinds of things that we might consider if we're talking about a seven-unit building that has the kind of scale that could fit into a residential neighborhood. And so I do want to, I'm going to share some of that with the board and um I'm, I'm trying to look for a few other examples. And that, and with this time, I'd like to do a few more tests. So if there's any sites that anybody like, I think, Denny said you were driving and looking at some sites. If there's any sites that anyone would like for me to do a test on, um, I'm I'm open to it. And I was thinking of doing a three-dimensional test on on one of these. Um, I had been thinking on one of the Canton Ave ones that has the three streets. I don't know if you remember that one that had the the test on it. But sometimes a plan diagram is a little different than a three-dimensional diagram in terms of looking at how this might apply. And I think it's really important for people to understand in the zoning that it's not just the a lot size and the number of units per square footage of lot, but these other things like open space and um, uh, the building footprint, you know, uh, lot coverage that are important drivers of what could be done. So it's not purely mathematical on the size of the lot. And I think that we have some diagrams that explain that, that could help folks. So if, I think what I'm suggesting is if anyone else has any thoughts about how we can prepare for when we do meet again, and so that we can, uh, it's not just taking a look at that list, which I think is an important part of it. Um, I just want to throw that out there.
So I, that's
Maybe we ought to think about doing some sort of like the webinars like we did for the Milton Landing.
Yes. So Alison, do you want to tell us a little bit about what you're planning for the housing production plan?
Absolutely. So I have been working uh with Danielle Raphael from the um Select Board Housing Committee, and we have put together a webinar of, you know, a sequence of slides that really demonstrate um why the town needs to look at the housing production plan as our roadmap to 10% and taking the strategies that were recommended in the housing production plan and how Milton should be putting those into action. Um, I actually pulled Cheryl's Dedham example into my slide deck because it really does a good job at it showing what potential uh is available for the condo conversion by law, allowing, you know, X amount of units within one building, and then having those building, those buildings spread out on a lot that fits within the existing context of a neighborhood. It, it, you know, adds, it adds some density without losing those things that people hold near and dear about their community. Um, so that's a really good example. We kind of parsed out all of the things, including community preservation, um, the new Milton Village overlay uh that we did, the plan unit development, um, the accessory dwelling unit. So we we kind of took all of these strategies and created visual aids to help people be more informed about why these things are essential to move, to moving Milton forward um and making a dent in the affordable housing so that, you know, the residents and the people that they elect to represent them are making the decisions about land use in Milton and not the state. Um, so that's really why this webinar is coming to fruition. We hope to have it ready in like a next a seven to 10 days and would like to get some residents to make statements in support of some of these strategies and then have it public facing.
So do you feel like that's a tool for us to pick up on the condo conversion and the um accessory unit by law? Or do you think this is sort of a separate?
It could have been there, and I I think the planning board has has really um played a very, very big role in the housing production plan strategies. Um, you know, most of what is going to be transformed Um, you know, most of what is going to be transformative change in Milton, um, is going to come out of the planning board. Uh, you got, you guys draft the zoning stuff, so I, I think that these make sense, um, to use. So why don't I, um, Cheryl and I have, had a little bit of back and forth about some of these slides. Why don't I pick her brain a little bit, and then maybe, uh, get like a draft to you early, mid-week?
Yeah, I mean, maybe what we do is we take a look at what you're preparing for that and see if that works for us.
Yeah.
Or if we need to do something separate, but I do think that, that piece, that educational piece with the Zoom webinar format for town meeting makes it a little tricky. Um, so having that education piece really leading up to the town meeting, whichever one we end up on, it makes a lot of sense and was very effective. So let's plan to advance that idea. So the one, um, I think that, that everybody's sort of in agreement, that we should keep plugging away and not lose any time. Um, and Cheryl, I hear your point about maybe we can have a meeting earlier in January. We have a bit of a challenge with our schedule. Because the ZBA has so many frequents, the frequency of meetings is so high, we only have one Zoom license. And I'm not sure of the intricacies of the issue, but the Milton TV and the Zoom platform can't host more than two meetings an evening. So we've been, they've blocked out the second and fourth Thursday for the planning board of every month. But they're filling in all the other dates with the board, the select board, the other boards and commissions and the ZBA. So I don't know if another date in January is available to us. And I was texting Tim, um, to see if he knew more, and he doesn't have that calendar handy either, because everything is in flux. So I'm wondering if we should just lock in the 14th for a public hearing now, so that people know when it's going to be.
I have no problem locking in the public hearing for them, but I was thinking if we wanted to have another meeting where it's just our discussion.
Okay.
Or it's public hearing, like if, if we get these maps, or, you know, if we get, if I do some more tests, you know, the more progress we make before the public hearing, I just think it could be helpful. We already have some comments, and we can start looking at some of those and figuring out if, like, you know, whether Kathleen has language ideas, or we have other criteria, you know, that we think we need to lay in. So should we adjust the 5,000 square feet of land area, should we adjust the 4,000 square feet existing? I, um, I, I think, uh, one, I've talked with Brian Furs, um, about, um, some ideas, and, uh, you know, there's some, maybe he can share those with the board earlier. I've heard he was, uh, he, he made that statement, but I, I missed that, of course. Um, but you know, the, the more people who take a look at it, they see things that we don't see, you know, and I think that's beneficial. But to whatever comments we can get between now and then, so anybody who may have been watching us all along, um, we can start to address before the public hearing, is all I'm saying. So if we can get that, and, um, and it has to be a different day than a Thursday, or possibly a slightly different time, you know, um, hopefully we can all be open to try and find something that works.
Yes, so let's do that then, if everybody's comfortable with it. We can plan to have our zoning public hearing on January 14th, then we can get it noticed appropriately. And if we can fit in another meeting be, before then, maybe that first week of January, we can have Tim and Alison look into what time slots are available and discuss the scheduling only amongst ourselves via email.
Did you want the, did you want the, uh, public hearing on the 14th as for the accessory dwelling units as well?
For all, for all three zoning articles.
Oh, yeah, and the trees.
Trees, yep. I think we should do them all at once.
Okay.
For the same reason, I mean, I don't want to.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 and I, I mean, and they kind of go together anyway, but I just wanted to check. As I had promised to send it to John Leonard, but I thought I'd wait till he got through the first week of all his hearings and then send him one.
Poor John.
Really didn't have the heart to send this, hey, look at this, because you have, your head's going to explode. Um, so I thought, um, but I'll, I will send it.
Okay.
I'm going to send him a fruit basket, I think, that poor guy.
Send him strength.
See if it includes a single malt, I think, I don't think it's.
Okay, then I think this concludes our business for this evening.
And for this year?
And for this calendar year, yes.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
So I will enter, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll let Denny know that.
So moved, and then we have a second.
A second.
Oh, okay, uh, Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes.
Good night.
Happy New Year, guys.